I'll call to order the Monday, July 3rd, 2023 Town Council regular meeting to order at 6:31. Clerk McCounser for the roll call.
Yes, would I call your name? Please say if you're here or not. Councillor Bordelon?
Here.
Casieri?
Here.
Franco?
Here.
Jakome?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
McBride?
Present.
Parker?
Here.
Westerfelt? And Melendez?
Here.
So you have eight out of nine.
That is a quorum. Thank you. If anyone would please rise for the salute to the flag.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, it's on. You just can't, you're going to talk louder.
Okay.
Bring it closer to you.
Yep. Onto recognitions, awards, and memorials. First, we have the proclamation recognizing Fitch Senior High School Class of 2023. Counselor Casieri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation recognizing Fitch High School Class of 2023. Whereas the friends and family of the class of 2023 gather to honor graduates at this ceremony on June 16th, 2023. And whereas high school graduations represent a milestone in every student's life. And whereas today we honor the member, members of this year's class for their accomplishments. And whereas we recognize the uncommon adversity caused by COVID-19 that the class of 2023 had to overcome to arrive at this moment. And whereas we also recognize that this adversity revealed the resiliency and the character of our students. And whereas we know our students have been provided the skills necessary to forge their chosen paths. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council does hereby congratulate the students of Robert E. Fitch High School Class of 2023 on a job well done and extends best wishes for their success and happiness in the future. And be it further resolved that we encourage all of our graduates to always stay true to yourselves and your goals. And be it further resolved that we trust that whatever you do, you will continue to demonstrate the best in our community and continue to make us proud. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, the 16th day of June, 2023, and is signed by the Mayor of Groton, Juan Melendez Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a proclamation honoring Stephen Post. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, proclamation honoring Stephen Post. Whereas upon the retirement of Stephen Post from the town of Groton, the Groton Town Council wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Stephen for his almost forty-eight years of loyal and dedicated service to the town of Groton and the citizens of this great town. And whereas Stephen Post began his career with the town of Groton in October 16th, 1975, as a laborer in the Public Works Department. And whereas Stephen was promoted to light equipment operator, then heavy equipment operator, then as foreman of the Public Works Department. And whereas on October 20th, 1996, Steve was promoted to Public Works Roads and Street Supervisor. Where for over twenty-six years, he consistently served the town with commendable professionalism and extraordinary diligence. And whereas on November 26th, 2019, he was bestowed with the title of Town Tree Warden. Where he added the supervision, care, and maintenance of the town's valuable streets trees to his list of responsibilities. And whereas during his years of dedicated service to the town of Groton and its citizens, Stephen's strong leadership provided invaluable support to a crew of over twenty individuals while undertaking road paving, snow plowing, numerous construction projects, overseeing the transfer station and land operations, as well as responding to natural disaster emergencies. And whereas Steve's talent and skill, knowledge of all things Groton, dedicated to the community, work ethic, commitment to excellent customer service, his commitment to get things done right, his good cheer and humor will be remembered and sorely missed. Now therefore be it that resolved, the Town Council of the town of Groton, on behalf of the citizens of Groton, extends to Stephen Post a heartfelt thank you for a job well done and best wishes for the happiest of retirement. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this third day, July 2023, Juan Melendez Jr., Mayor of the town of Groton.
Thank you.
And we do have Steve here if you want to present it.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Onto receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-ct.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Okay, we'll start on Zoom. Yeah.
First up, Genevieve Surf. I'm promoting her right now.
Okay, thank you. You're muted. Uh. Ms. Surf, you have the floor. You're muted. There you go.
Okay.
You have the floor.
I, I'm sorry. I meant, I wanted to come in, but um. I'm not feeling well, so. Um, I would like to start by, my name is Genevieve Surf. And I live at Six Pearl Street, Mystic. I would like to read a statement by Anne Marie Foster. And unfortunately, I do not have her exact address. But this is her statement, and I'm sure you won't have trouble finding her address. She's a member in very good standing of the Democratic Party. And this is what she says. I am very sad that our town is holding such an important town council meeting on an evening guaranteed to have low attendance as it is the eve of our Independence Day. And I am sadder still that the agenda contains what appears to be an end run to destroy the work of a bipartisan doctrine drawn up as a result of the dangerous void in our property reuse guidelines. I continue to fail to understand why councillors Franco, Casieri, Parker, Jones, and now Jakome want to disappear the work of the PRUC rather than attempting to work with the committee to respond to the concerns raised by citizens following the Mystic Oral School disaster, which I understand still has a noose around the neck of the Groton taxpayers. I'm sorry to say that I believe these councillors are becoming almost as great a threat to our democracy as former President Trump and his Big Lie backers. And they should fear for their reelections if they continue on this dangerous, nearsighted, and poorly conceived course that seems to have left democracy in the dust. Please refrain from taking any action tonight regarding the 2023 draft Property Reuse Committee document unless it is called to call for a public hearing to be held at a time that optimizes the chances of additional public input, followed by a clear vote on the 2023 draft, not a vote hiding behind an obfuscation by the 2021 draft. Let the citizens see what you are doing and remember it come November 2023. My husband, Richard Dixon, also has wanted to be present tonight, but we had a previous commitment out of town. He agrees with my letter to the council and is saddened by this council continuing to use misguided and misapplied rules of procedure such as point of order to avoid full debate on issues vital to our town. Tomorrow, we celebrate the birth of our democratic republic. Please do not degrade it this evening. I could just add my own, I could not have said anything better than what Anne Marie just said. And as I said, you know, she's been a loyal Democrat forever. In fact, I think she ran Joe Portnoy's campaign. So if she's speaking out to you, Democrats, this is a very strong message. You, you, you have abrogated, you have abrogated the citizens, what the citizens for two or three years have been telling you that they wanted, you know, um, in view of the Mystic Oral School disaster. We needed, we need to have a proper process. We now also have the data centers disaster as a result of, of your not having a process. And we have the thirty billion dollar lawsuit lodged against the town because you jumped into this. All you saw was the money that, that these developers were brandishing in your faces. You probably didn't even read the document.
One minute remains. One minute.
One minute left. One minute left, right?
Correct.
So basically, we have not had a process for what to do with these schools. And not only that, but we've, we've done almost, we did almost zero due diligence on looking at these developers and their own issues. The wood developer chosen for the Mystic Oral School um, has, has basically been tried for trying to bribe, bribe public officers and also stealing from the trade union. So this, this developer basically had a, you know, criminal misdemeanor, if you want to call it criminal background. And you still, Councillor Franco, it's still on Facebook that you were still pushing him when, when his criminal background came out. This is completely incomprehensible. All I can say is that I think you're trying to get something done before the November elections because all these other projects have basically gone out of window.
Thank you. Your time is expired.
All right. Thank you for your patience. And please, please compromise and stable this motion tonight.
Thank you.
And come to a compromise.
Joe Rusk is on next.
Joe Rusk?
I don't know. She wants to speak or not. She was on there.
Moderator Rusk, would you like the floor?
I would not. Thank you.
Okay.
He's coming in. Should be set.
You have the floor?
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Melendez and Council. My name is Van Brown. I live at 925 River Road, Mystic, town of Groton. I have wanted for years to say something, anything positive about your representation of people of this town. You still cheat me of that. You show up, you endure, and then you do whatever you want to do. I hope that my speaking is not inconvenient to you. I am coming to learn that these meetings are to be held at your convenience and not to support the business of the town. Town council meetings are supposed to be on a regular schedule and therefore easy to plan personal time around. A councillor's double book over those dates shows a lack of respect for their responsibility to the commitment they made to their constituents. Changing dates for a meeting is also a well-known tactic to hamstring opposition. You also want to limit feedback to those whom you were supposed to represent. We have gone from the ability to speak at every meeting to once a month. Being a town councillor is a great ego gig if it worked for the people. I have learned that the council's new rubber stamp in training has decided that the hard work of the Property Reuse Committee is too dense. And yet the budget is more certainly dense. Use of the 2021 proposal as advocated by certain council cadre would allow that group of self-interested individuals to work with little or no restriction or oversight. We have witnessed what that convenience has almost cost this town. Town council, sadly, you need the oversight. I also note that dense has several meanings. When you frustrate your constituency to the point of acting out, know that you have highly motivated your opposition. Don't pardon the loyal opposition to militancy. Have you noticed that no one shows up to speak in support of your policies? I expect you will have them here for future meetings. Give the people back their voice. Let us speak at every meeting. Time commitment and the messiness is part of your job. Trying to exclude the people shouts out to all of us that you are either afraid of what might be said or what might be heard. Respect your commitment to us. Do not restrict councillors' comments. As long as you share a voting block viewpoint. Three-minute rubber stamp is all that's needed. Maintain balance in meeting and policy. More time is discussion is required. You should seek that balance. Please let us be proud of you. I want to be proud of you. Do not take action that you have to hide. I support the new Property Reuse Committee RFP document. I wish to thank Chair David McBride and his committee members, and many committee members, for their hard work and for the good of the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Now Beth Tillman, you have the floor?
Good evening. My name is Beth Tillman of 925 River Road. It is a great and unpleasant surprise to me to be speaking before you this evening. We attended the meeting which was to have replaced a July 4th meeting or July 3rd meeting because too many people would be unavailable to move the state according to the referral from Ms. Franco. And yet, here we are. This is not your town to play games with. And yet, here we are in the middle of a major game of manipulation. I'm concerned that you have forgotten the promise made by this town manager and the town council when the Oral School and other surplus properties came to light as backroom deals shrouded in secrecy. We were told that a new policy would be enacted which would encourage community, neighborhood, and individual dialogue. Not a monologue of the type that we had for Mr. Ressler where we were met with a deal that was done. Obviously, not as done as you thought it was. The governor was appalled to discover that there was a huge resistance to the project as the town was not forthcoming with them. Transparency was and is a huge issue, and we were assured that all RFP processes would be transparent. Now, the newest member of the council appointed with Andre resigned has indicated that the new policy devised by the town council members and heads of boards and committees is too dense to be understood. I fear to think what will happen to this new councillor when the budget rolls around again if the proposed policy of a few pages is deemed too dense to be understood. The new policy of 2023 is clear and concise. It embodies most of what was promised. It does not go as far as I would have liked to see it go, but it's a starting point for empowering neighborhoods to have control over what directly affects them positively or negatively. What really is being indicated by this august body, if the highly imprecised 2021 document is adopted again, is that taxpayers are irrelevant to the town. Boards and commissions are irrelevant to the town. Certain town councillors are irrelevant to the town. What a slap in the face and how unbelievably rude to give a task requiring time, study, and deliberation to a group of very committed people and then slap it away as too dense to understand. This count forgets that, this council forgets that while Mosa is directed towards the Oral School property, the egregious actions towards other surplus properties was brought to light. For some of us, it has become a concern, and we want to rein in a council bent on making this town uninhabitable with excess development of dense housing stock to meet a demand which will fade over time, as it has again and again at electric vote. I would hope that you can reach deeply into your psyches and souls and find the integrity to support those who have worked long and diligently to bring fair, even-handed, easily understood policy as a guide to the reuse of surplus properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rambois, you have the floor. You have the floor? Yeah, he's there. He's muted now. He just wasn't. There you go.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Town Council. Jean-Claude Rambois, 169 Shenet Costet Parkway. I'm an elected official from RTM District Two. Last week's Town Council Cal meeting, Councilboard along spoke falsely that the town mayor Melendez and town staff set up an agenda item alluding to ill intent. In fact, your rules, Rule 10K states the mayor and manager develop agendas for meetings. Councilboard along is wrong and does not know the rules of the office she serves in. This is not the first time that she has been confused regarding the rules. She needs to apologize to both the mayor and town manager as loud as she did when she repeatedly slandered them six times, saying this is a setup on Tuesday's 27th Cal. Three years ago, I published a letter, and some of you remember it, that the New London, uh, on the New London Day, pleading for the town to reflect on their priorities and better serve our residents. The crude decorum and civility has persisted. Common denominator and chief culprit of all of this divisiveness is Councillor Portia Bordelon. Mayors have tried to rein her in. Rules have been changed. Time limits established. Even rules changed in the other elected bodies because she hijacked their proceedings. Meteors have been suggested, and it's come down to having a duty officer present at meetings. Yet all of this is still only, there's only one person that still believes, rules for thee, not for me. This council has tried to delicately curb the tantrums and verbal abuse, yet it still continues. It needs to stop. If the council maintains this complicity, you will all be perpetuating a hostile work environment. To hold Councilboard along accountable, start referring cantankerous behavior to the Rules Committee to decide. Start with last week's Town Council Cal is a good first step. Please start formally documenting this chronic transgression. Councilboard along will have an opportunity to explain her behavior. Routinely, unprofessional actions she's made are excused away by passion. Well, let's get the definition of passion. Intense striving or overmastering feeling or conviction. Okay, so her excuse is she has a feeling. Are feelings based on facts or data? Well, let's find out the definition of feeling. It's an emotional state or reaction. Are emotions and reactions a reasonable excuse to have, be rude and disrespectful? Well, we need to determine how emotion equals demonstrating poor public behavior. One more word needs to be clarified. Emotion, a conscious mental reaction such as anger or fear, subjectively experienced. Emotion, a conscious mental reaction such as anger or fear, subjectively experienced as strong feeling, usually directed towards a specific object and typically accompanied by a physiological and behavioral change in the body. Very interesting. Mental, physiological, and behavior changes? That's a trifecta. So, Council Board along, which emotion drives your passion to serve Groton? Who have you directed your passion to? Town mayor, professional town staff, the public that disagrees with you, your elected colleagues, all of the above? So can you tell us on record, is it your anger or joy that you use when you speak your voice? You might be getting joy in the inside, stirring up conflict with others and feeding your desire to disrupt, but the tone of voice, body language, and demeanor you display to us as a parent, your passion reeks of anger. Your actions equal nothing more than being a bully, inflexible, harassing, and an intimidator of others. This is a clear sign that you cannot separate passion and professionalism. I propose a challenge to you. There are three phrases that have never been uttered by Council Board along at a town meeting. "I'm sorry, I was wrong," "You were right." If Groton residents can find it anywhere, I'll apologize, say I was wrong, and you were right. Council Board along, speak less and act more. There are no significant accomplishments that you have completed in your, on your own, for the work. It appears your skill set is limited to talking and pointing fingers at others to get the actual work done. And you swoop in and take all the credit? Eh-eh. Remember the saying, "In order to talk the talk, you have to walk the walk." It's time to start walking the walk. Start by coming up with real concise plans.
One minute remains.
Put in writing for once. One minute. Make motions rather than blathering on. Your worldview continues to be, if you're not with me, you're against me. This is not the type of leadership that Groton needs. This range true even if you are the highest vote getter in an election or not. Stop talking and start doing. Mr. Mayor, the town council rules are there for you to preside and control a meeting. I know you are trying your best, but best is not good enough for the residents of Groton or the productivity of governing body. Please stop letting one of your colleagues treat you like a doormat. There are several ways for you to be fair, firm, and consistent. From now on, if the councillor is unruly and/or passionate, please use Rule 5. In case of any disturbance or disorderly conduct within a meeting hall, the mayor can have the power to order the persons causing the disturbance removed or have themselves removed. Okay? Any motion like this can be made by any councillor. We need all of you to act to prevent this wasted time and get work done for all of Groton. Please do something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to note, councillor Westerveld joined us at 6:56. That's all you have online, so we'll move to in-person. First on my list, I have Harold Robb, followed by Lauren Gothier.
Good evening. Harold Robb, 7 Hancock Drive, Mystic. I am dismayed to see the watered-down Property Reuse Document being considered today during the town council meeting. Why have the town council ignored the work by a town council committee to develop a proper re-use policy document? Is it because it puts the onus on town councillors to provide oversight of the process? The time needed to provide oversight is time well-spent to protect the town from another Ressler fiasco. The goals listed in the policy document being considered today include some of the goals of the committee's May 19 version, but not all of them. Missing are, ensure all town council, RTM, agency, board, and commission decisions align with the long-term strategic plans, including but not limited to the plan of conservation and development, zoning regulations, et cetera, of the town. Second one would be, ensure the decision-making process is inclusive, participatory, comprehensive, consistent, predictable, transparent, accountable, and accessible to the public. The third one missing is, seek to satisfy the needs for housing, market rate, affordable, low, and moderate income. I would have thought that these are all worthy goals that everyone could agree with. Why aren't they included in the version being considered today? If the town council doesn't want a repeat of the Ressler fiasco, I suggest that this document is inadequate to protect the town from making the same mistakes again. Please do not approve the Property Reuse Document that's being considered today as it currently is presented. That's the right decision. Please do not approve it. Thank you.
Next, I have Lauren Gothier, followed by Larry Dunn.
Good evening. My name's Lauren Gothier, 31 Boardsen Road. I represent District 4 on the Groton RTM. I serve on the Connecticut State Contracting Standards Board, and I was a member of the Property Reuse Committee. Our group presented our vision back in March to this council to center citizen voices in the building of our community when town-owned assets were to be sold or redeveloped. Because communities are built by citizens, they are not bought and sold by developers. The citizens need to be centered. From March onto May, when we submitted this current document to this council, those who oppose it have not submitted a single email, a comment, a question to our body, even though they have been implored to participate. We received positive responses from citizens. We had a developer show up and speak positively. We heard his comments. We incorporated some of them. We worked collaboratively because that's what this process is about, and that's what this document is about. The 2023 Property Reuse Document, let me be clear. We worked hard to defend taxpayers' interests, this group of intelligent and compassionate and committed members from just a wide swath, a wide intersection of our community, to elevate citizens' concerns and needs, provide a fair, clear procedure that all stakeholders could have confidence in. The Property Reuse Committee sent a 12-ish-page document to the council in May, and at the end, still nothing. And the promise for adopting this guideline, this 2021 loose kind of vague policy, it just doesn't make sense. The 2023 document still would have been able to allow Groton to kickstart redevelopment, still would have been able to let us move forward and market properties and let our planning staff do their thing. It in no way would have hindered it. The 2021 document is inferior, and the premise that it would have held us back, the 2023 document, is completely false. So crying that this document is too dense is frankly embarrassing. Passing something just to get something passed is embarrassing. Stretchering a vote to shut down democratic debate and engage in the actual kind of policymaking this body exists for is embarrassing. Weaponizing decorum as a means to shut down dissent and passionate voices is embarrassing. But this is not surprising from this group of councillors. We've seen it time and time again. This council focuses on its petty click squabbles as the budget explodes, as the grandness stagnates, as taxpayers pay tens of thousands of dollars on lawsuits from the exact kind of property development deals that the 2023 document would have prevented. As a citizen and a taxpayer and a dedicated public servant, I'm enraged, passionately enraged, and angry. And I am embarrassed. I can't underscore that enough. But the same intersection of intelligence and compassion and dedication that went into that Property Reuse Committee and is here tonight speaking against what this council has done, and there's a Groton independent movement, same group of folks essentially, we're not going to be written off. And you can trash our work, and you can try to silence us, you can write your little notes instead of listening to us. There's going to come a day in November, we're going to be heard. But you can surprise me, and you can fix this. You can amend the motion tonight, amend it in favor of the 2023 Property Reuse Document. I'm happy to be wrong. I'm happy to be surprised, and I'd really like to be happy to not be embarrassed. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Larry Dunn, followed by Kevin Bogel.
Good evening. Larry Dunn, 91 Crosswinds Drive. And for my first topic, I'm speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission as its chair. The Conservation Commission earlier provided on June 13 comments related to the use of the NIPS fund from the state. So very briefly, what we submitted was that these funds should be used as investments, opportunities to reduce waste, not to do cleanup projects. Waste reduction not only improves the environment but also helps avoid a significant increase in town costs over the next five to seven years as the cost of waste disposal skyrockets. To support that objective, the Conservation Commission is working with town staff, SCARA, and others to provide forecasts of the cost impacts, and will recommend pilot programs to avoid that cost and increase in mill rates to the town. That's the easy one. I have a second topic. And in this one, still Larry Dunn, but I'm speaking as the representative from the Conservation Commission to the TOPE Process Group. I reviewed the June 27 town council meeting, and given that discussion that I observed, it was apparent to me that the document provided to the town council on June 27 in response to the request of the mayor for the town council was not reviewed, certainly not discussed in this meeting. I would also like to point out errors that were presented. First error is that the TOPE Committee submitted a policy in process that was five pages in length, not 20 pages that were referenced. There was an additional 15 pages of RFP process recommendations that we recommended be deferred until such time as the first five pages were actually addressed and reviewed. Second major thing is that this added unnecessary red tape, and I heard tonight that it was dense. Well, let me simplify that. There's really only five simple items that were added to the document. One, it defined who was on the PRUC. Two, it provided a basis of criteria to determine the best use of a property. Three, it required town meetings to ensure transparency of the process. Four, it required a formal report on the PRUC recommendations. And five, required that that report be communicated before any town council decision. That ain't red tape. That's just basic governance requirements. My personal view is that the town council ignored months of community volunteer effort, did not even discuss the TOPE Committee work product and strong-armed town council procedures to keep the community out of the decision process. Quite frankly, I also am embarrassed with the governance process of this town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Bogel, followed by Kelly Poulsen.
Good evening, Gary Dunn. Everyone, my name is Kevin Bogel. I live on 467 River Road in Mystic. I had no idea the committee has these types of discussions, so it was very interesting to hear someone on so far. The real reason I'm here tonight is because I'm a resident on River Road itself, and I am one of the persons that does regularly write into the day due to some of my frustration, of course. As a background, I came from the New Jersey area, South Jersey, and based on what I'm hearing tonight, what I see, that seems like Disney World compared to what I'm seeing right now. But no kidding, we had a mayor who was always accessible. We had four commissioners who represented each area of our neighborhoods. If we ever had an issue, we could go see our neighborhood commissioner. Look, they couldn't fix everything, but they would really get back to you and tell you the problems, the issues, and if they could fix it, and if they couldn't fix it then, they might be able to fix it later. But it was a very reactionary type of government, and I grew up in that, and this seems like the exact opposite of the way I grew up. So just to notice that as a fact. I also wanted to mention that the other thing we always did, and I'll stay on point here too, is that it didn't matter. It didn't matter if someone was a Democrat, someone was a Republican. That was your commissioner. You went to see them, you had faith in them that they would address it, and it wasn't based on political parties. And I see a lot of that, what I'm hearing tonight, what I've seen in the past as well. Now, I currently, of course, reside in Mystic itself, and I would say that I do reach out to Dave McBride at times, Portia, they're very responsive, Andre Baumgartner, I saw him earlier, so sometimes I speak to him as well. So they've all been very responsive as well. I've had had some challenges with other councillors in some of the responsibilities I did get involved in. There was a Groton Beautification Committee that I was part of, and we had 60 members, 60 people show up for the first meeting, and they were so, so interested in doing this good for the community. And we start to go through some of the meetings, and it just started to dwindle, dwindle and dwindle. And we had Rachel leading that. And at one point, Rachel said, you know, "Look, this isn't about Mystic. This is for Groton. It's the Groton side of Mystic, it's the Groton side of town, not Mystic." And it really just turned everyone off, and that's why I dropped out myself. So really, why I am here, I just see constant disorganization. I know these individuals very well, some of them, but a lack of organization, lack of direction, the ability to work together is just not there, as you can all see it, you see the frustration with everyone, and it's not the way that government should be organized, in my opinion. I think you have to look for ways to move forward as a group. If there are opportunities that you all see together, you have to look at them, and you have to say, "What is it we all want to reach as a goal?" Like, you may not get everything you want, you have to compromise. You have to work with other group members that are part of this town council. So that's one of the biggest things I would actually like to say. The other thing I would also like to say is that approximately 10 years ago, this is more specific to me myself, where I actually approached several town council members about paving River Road. That's how I first got involved, okay? And that's what I may write about. It's been 10 years since I've been involved, okay? 10 years, and the road has not been paved for 30 years. This Saturday night, I went to a party in Mystic where it was right along River Road, Gravel Street, and I often refer to that. I say, "Gravel Street should be repaved, River Road should be repaved, and Pearl Street, they're a mess." Aquarian's really made a mess of those roads, the next time you get a chance to look at that. I'm at the party, I spoke to an individual who has lived here for 30 years, spends approximately $50,000 a year in her taxes, and she wanted to explain to me how she's been trying to get the road paved for 30 years, and she had absolutely no confidence in the current town council that they would pave her road. You're talking about paving a road. Like, that's the simple, basic question that someone's asking. So it's absurd that for 30 years, she has not had her road repaved, and that whole area is a mess right now. Last thing I'll point out is sustainability. I'll mention how I was directly involved, and approximately two years ago, and there's been other storms too, but approximately two years ago, I went to the YMCA in the morning, came back an hour later, and all of River Road was completely flooded. I'm talking from the Peace Sanctuary all the way up to my house, which is on the corner around the turn near the 95 Overpass. Ice, water completely covering the roads. What I've been told is there are two culverts planned for River Road, like two culverts are going to abate that and affect it. Look, I realize we have a sustainability program, and we're trying to look into options, but we are far, far behind ourselves and all the local communities in this area. So I hope we can learn how to move together.
Thank you. I have Kelly Poulsen, followed by John Goodrich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. Kelly Poulsen, 112 Laurelwood Road. I've been respectfully requesting residential light trespass ordinances since February of 2022, for a year and a half. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinances requiring lights to be shielded and lights to be aimed down on their property, preventing light trespass on and through adjacent properties, and to require excessive light decorations to be shut off overnight past 10:00 PM. My diagonal neighbor, Steve, moved his excessive LED flag made up of ropes of LED lights to the house directly across from me before he left for Florida in the fall. He added a second LED flag made up of ropes of LED lights to the light trespass light pollution on May 7, the night he got back from Florida. This is added to the two lights he added last year that he made sure were on all winter long while he was not home. On July 1, a third LED flag made up of ropes of LED lights has been added to the roof of Don, who is the one that could not handle the fact that my fence blocked his access to park on his lawn and shine his high beams into my home. He put it on his roof so that it can be seen over my fence. He's also the one that put a light in his backyard aimed towards my property, not on his property at all, when I put up my fence. The neighbors are clearly escalating the light trespasses way beyond excessive and has been occurring way too long. All of these lights are added to the five lights across the street from me that are on all night, every single night. on all night, every single night. These ordinances are necessary to prevent light trespass, light pollution, and to stop the harm to all humans, animals, vegetation, and our planet. The six residents of 113 since March exceeds the four residents maximum per the Code of Enforcement Officer of Groton. 113 is also showing signs of adding even more with the increased number of cars all hours of the night, increasing loads, increased loads of building material being delivered, and increased boxes. They are already over their limit by two. The property next door has a floodlight that trespasses across my entire backyard, the lights behind my prop, the trees behind my property, and my neighbor's backyard on the other side of me. The light is so bright, it hurts my eyes, and I can't see to walk in my own backyard. I've had the light trespassing across my property and into my home every single night, all night long for over six years. Would you want them trespassing into your home every single night? Would you want this happening to your kids, your parents, your friends? I am not alone. About 180 Groton registered voters signed a petition asking for these residential light trespass ordinances. These ordinances are necessary to protect all trees, flower, vegetation, insects, animals, and human beings whose reproduction is tied to the earth and circadian rhythms. They are necessary to protect our family and friends whose positive correlation between light trespass and light pollution, and the increase in cancers. There are positive correlations between light trespass, light pollution, and global warming. Have you seen the projections? Groton will not exist if we don't do something about this. There are towns in Connecticut doing their part by enacting residential light trespass ordinances. It is well past time for Groton to step up and do its part by enacting residential light trespass ordinances. This is the right thing to do for our homes, our families, and our planet. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinances stating light poles need to be shielded to prevent light trespass, stating lights should be aimed down to their property to prevent light trespass on adjacent properties, stating floodlights are not allowed, and to require excessive light decorations to be shut off overnight past 10:00 PM. Lighting shall be the minimum necessary in both number of luminaries and intensity of light to achieve the intended purpose of the lighting, which is generally walking to your home and unlocking your door. Thank you for your time, and hope you have a wonderful night.
Thank you. John Goodrich, followed by Sophia Baumann.
Good evening, everyone. John Goodrich, 1350 River Road, also a member of the Historic District Commission, and have the honor of serving on the PRUC with councilors Westerveld, McBride, and Bordelone. So, I came here tonight with a prepared statement that probably is going to take all five minutes plus some, and you guys will be happy to know I've decided to truncate it severely, because I'm sure you guys don't enjoy hearing me talk all the time. Let's just get to the point. You guys have a decision to make tonight. The community has come out, you know what they want. You can decide to do what you guys want, which is to hold the document you guys voted at the last meeting or talked about, which is only going to expose the town of Groton to more lawsuits and more trouble. Or you can listen to the community. As elected officials, your job is actually to listen to the community. But as many people have said, we've seen that your petty whatevers always take over. So, to quote Van Brown earlier, he said, "Nobody ever comes out to support you guys, everybody comes out to speak against what you want to do." Yet you still vote the way you want to vote. So to me, a picture speaks a thousand words. Is this the person we listen to? Do we have certain Town Councilors that listen to their Democratic Party chair? Or do they listen to the public? So, to use another old saying, actions speak a lot of the words. If you guys vote tonight to go to 21 document, we know who makes your decisions for you. If you give the PRUC document a chance, we know you're actually here for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have Sophia Baumann, followed by Mary Ellen Furlong.
Good evening. This is Sophia Baumann, and I live in Groton, F28 Shenacostet Road, and it's apartment G. I will add that, not to elevate the academic titles, but I do hold a PhD in Marina Atmospheric Sciences, and the reason I state that is because I want to talk about RFPs. RFPs are documents, which I read almost every day. And that's because I apply for grant funding to fund my research and projects, and sometimes I even contact the town to think about collaborations, because I really like living in this town, and I would like to benefit the community with my expertise. And so, RFPs are documents I gotta read, and I have to be pretty diligent about understanding the language in there, and they're pretty complex, and the nature of the RFP being so complex is because it really wants to be pretty thorough, it really wants to outline the process about eligibility, you know, the deadlines, you name it, everything. And I was reviewing the RFP document that was actually prepared, you know, by, by this wonderful group of people. I, you know, aside from a few typos and some formatting issues, I just thought it was a really well-thought, and actually really thoughtful document, which would be an amazing framework to guide the town as people are looking to, you know, undertake development or redevelopment of property. We have so many properties that are really, like, begging for something, you know, we don't want to have them be sitting there abandoned, nothing is happening. I want to see, I want to see our town thrive. But I also feel that there has to be a due process, and I think that the RFP is, as is right now, could be always improved, anything can be improved, but it's pretty good, I would say. And I think that the Town Manager expressed that, I don't want to speak for you, but in the meeting in March, I heard that there was some approval. And, and the committee, I think the committee, the TOPE Committee, is pretty brilliant, and, and the reason I state that is because this committee is actually bringing diverse voices together. Yes, these people are involved in different commissions, these people are involved in different governmental, you know, maybe positions. But when you bring these voices together, that is when you have power, because these voices, these opinions, these conversations are occurring in the same place, at the same time, and that is where you can really achieve progress, because people need to communicate at the same time. And that's when the best ideas are coming out. I want this town to thrive, and I think a thriving community, thriving town, is going to exist when we have diversity of voices contributing at the same time, together, in agreement. There's always going to be disagreement, but we have to acknowledge the strength that we have there in ability to really communicate together. And I think this, this committee is, is really an amazing, awesome idea that I would love to see to survive, and I really would like to see this council give it a shot, because this was so much work. I, I work on research, I work on projects. You think it would take a couple of months to develop something, a document? No, it takes a long time, because you need to think. When you want to be thoughtful, it takes time. So people undermining the work of this committee, they're making a mistake, because it's so much time that's dedicated. We should be grateful that people are actually willing to do this work, and we should just praise them and support them instead of trying to undercut these efforts. And I really would like to support these efforts. Now, the last thing is that I really am so concerned about sustainability and resilience in Groton. We're an environmental justice community, and we're facing climate impacts from sea level rise, and there are so many other impacts on us. And I am very worried that the concept of resilience, climate change, these concepts are not, still not resonating here with some of the folks here in the room. I want you to be pretty careful about that, because if you're going to reject the, you know, the thinking about that and actively engaging committee members who are happy to help with their expertise, we will not be in a better place in the future. We'll be only going backwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I have my name and address? I'm sorry.
I have it here.
Okay, you do, okay.
Yep. I have Mary Ellen Furlong, followed by Jim Furlong.
I would rather have stayed at home with my family, because this is a holiday weekend. Strange time to have this meeting. I wonder if there has ever been a meeting on July 3rd before. However, what I'd like to say is that on May 23rd, 2023, a majority of the Town Council voted to extend the Town Manager's contract. There was no good reason for this at the time, because the contract was not up for renewal for another year. The reason given by the mayor was that the Town Manager was doing a fantastic job, and that the manager himself had requested the extension. Under the current manager, we have had the Resplur proposal for the Oral School, which was followed by the negotiations with Blue Lotus to take over the project. When those negotiations failed, we were threatened by Resplur, the town was threatened by Resplur, with potential lawsuits. We had a host agreement with Got Space, and I do believe that Counselor Franco had asked the Town Manager whether he was satisfied with that host agreement, and he replied that he was very comfortable with it. He also presented the council with another proposal for a second data center with New England Edge. These developments were supposed to increase the grant list and benefit the town. Instead, they all failed. The projects were opposed by several large groups of taxpayers, because they would have destroyed neighborhoods and have had a seriously negative effect on the town's livability and character. So instead of increasing the grant list, we have large legal bills and threats of lawsuits. The latest came on June 12th, when the town was served by Got Space with a $30 billion lawsuit. Absurd, yes, it certainly was, but we still will have to call the town lawyers in again, more large legal bills. The only success I can see in the last three years was the Town Property Reuse Committee's document detailing the way requests for proposals and qualifications for the vetting of developers should be handled. Apparently, the majority of Town Councilors do not want to allow the citizens and taxpayers any voice in government. The reuse committee was dissolved without discussion, and the council is voting tonight to drop, to adopt the hastily written and toothless 2021 three-page document written by the previous Town Council. They will not even discuss the committee's painstakingly and expertly crafted document. Adopting the 2021 document, as others have said, many others have said, will leave the town totally unprotected from ill-chosen and unvetted developers. Additionally, on Saturday, when I looked at the agenda, and I started looking at the town's agenda for these meetings.
One minute remains.
On the Sa, the Saturday instead of just Friday, because I found very unexpected things. At any rate, I was very surprised by a proposal of Counselor Parker to disband or dissolve, I don't remember which, the resilience and sustainability task force. This item was outlined in red since it had been just added to the agenda. This item has since disappeared. The majority of the council is moving to concentrate all the power in the town in the hands of the Town Manager, Town Council, Town Planner, and Town Developer. I do not see a fantastic job done by the town leadership in the past three years. They have done nothing to benefit the town and the taxpayers. On the contrary, we are worse off, as the town's government costs have risen sharply, tax rates are up, and the only increase in the grant list.
Thank you.
Comes from the increased assessment of housing.
If you have further comments, you can submit them to the Town Club.
This is nothing you should be proud of.
Thank you. I have Jim Furlong, followed by Chris Mason.
My name is Jim Furlong. I live at 57 Fishtown Lane in Mystic. I expected a much smaller crowd tonight, and I congratulate the town. It's a place where people care, definitely. I agree that the latest property reuse document needs, needs examination, and it needs, it needs discussion. To throw it away after a year, year's work by very bright people is just criminal. I won't call it criminal, I'd say it's very foolish, and it followed what someone here described as a setup at the last meeting. I, the word setup came to my mind when I, when I heard the way that the discussion of this plan was to be cut off. Most people, people have dealt with very important issues here tonight, and I'm not going to get into them further. I agree, I agree that, that we need more discussion, and what particularly bothered me here was a pseudo-psychiatric examination of one of the, one of the Town Councilors by someone who I, I know could possibly have a psychiatric license. I don't even know that the guy should have been allowed to talk. I don't know who he is, but he was talking nonsense. There's a, there's a psychological psychiatric phenomenon, which I can't quite recall now. It involves taking your own thoughts and replacing them, replacing someone else's thoughts with those. I think that's what we were hearing. I don't think this guy should have been allowed to go, go on. I think it was quite, it brought down the level of discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Mason, followed by Gary Wells.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Chris Mason. I live at 17 Water Street, apartment A14. I'm coming to you with a concern of noise that is occurring in downtown Mystic area. My wife and I have been residents of 17 Water Street for 20 years, and in our 29 years, we have never, 20 years, we have never experienced a type of noise disruption that has affected us and other residents of our condo building since the Port of Call and the Dive opened their doors. We have repeatedly been unable to sleep due to excessive noise. Other residents have also been affected. Patrons of the Dive have repeatedly linger, and the door has been frequently left open to let late-night music make its way outside and into our house. This is a frequent occurrence every day of the week. We have taken several steps to address this issue, including walking into the establishment after midnight, calling the Dive personally, emailing the owner, repeatedly calling the local police, and in one evening, I did file a police report. There's been no effective long-term solution. While we recognize that there is no noise ordinance in Groton, we should expect that all our neighbors recognize that downtown is both a residential and commercial district. Outside of the Port of Call and the Dive, they have erected a permanent structure which encourages encourages late-night lingering. We are aware that the town worked closely with the proprietary, uh, chapter one after a similar noise complaint, and we're asking their support in consideration of a noise ordinance amendment or an enforcement to remove temporary structures that may be contributing to the noise. We also welcome other solutions and dialogue, but are disappointed that despite numerous complaints, there is no resolution. And one evening when I did notify the police, the dispatcher, no, uh, response to me was, well, you live downtown.
Thank you. Gary Wells, followed by Becca Welt.
Gary Wells, 5 Route 27 in Old Mystic. And I was, I want to speak in favor or on the Property Reuse Committee. I, I was, what struck me, I was thinking of an interview with the Italian car designer, Pien Farina, who designs exclusively all the Ferraris and incidentally designed the Fiat iDrive. And he was working for General Motors, and he's talking about working with clinics, which would be approximately comparable to, to, to our committees. And he says, "When you design an automobile, it must sell to millions of people. The investment is terrific. That is the origin of the clinics." Where you make a new car and you invite a dozen people, a dentist, a sportsman, a lawyer, a prostitute, and you say, "Do you like this? Do you prefer that?" I accept that. I am not an enthusiast, and I'll tell you why. It is not because I am super, but I am looking to the future, and these people are accustomed to the past, and that can be very misleading. So I think it's important that we look to the future. Our planners and development department, they tend, they're not necessarily super, but their job is to look to the future. And a lot of the public comments, people are, are looking into the past. And I'd like to see the town move into the future, and we have to deal not with millions, but with the entire town of Groton and convince them that this is a good, good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Becca Welt, followed by Kristen Earls.
Good evening, Becca Welt, 32 Boulder Court. I'm speaking tonight to thank the Property Reuse Committee for all the work they've done on the 2023 draft document. It says a lot when motivated citizens are willing to work together to create something that will better their community. I was disheartened to hear that this town council plans to ignore this work and instead return to the 2021 document. As I understand it, that document does not include citizen input or staff oversight when considering reuse of properties. It seems not only short-sighted, but also disrespectful to the citizens on the committee as well as to the community as a whole. When input is given in good faith and then ignored outright by a dismissive council, the message to citizens is clear. The committee was given busywork designed to appease concerned citizens while all the while the intention was that nothing would change. And I would like to say that I know of at least one occasion when Councilor Bordelon publicly stated she was wrong, and that was when she was very wise and withdrew her support for the Resspler fiasco, and I still thank her and honor her for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Earls, followed by Susan Freddie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, town manager, staff. Kristen Earls, 144 Brook Street in Groton. I'm here this evening on behalf of Groton Conservation Advocates to share a few thoughts on the distribution of Groton's NIPS tax funds, which we understand may be on the council's agenda a little bit later this month. We believe that Groton and the town council have a great opportunity to use these funds for strengthening our waste reduction efforts in town and in ways that can engage and educate our community in the process. In the first year of NIPS tax collection, the town received over $76,000 of distributable funds. The most recent payment for the half-year period ending in March was over $46,000. The size of this fund and its ongoing nature means it can have real and positive impact in Groton. And while NIPS are a huge plastic waste problem, this program presents an opportunity to reduce all kinds of solid waste in Groton and to engage and educate the public about its impact on people and the environment. How can we best deliver on this program's potential for the town? We'd like to recommend that the council consider setting up a simple process to distribute these funds, one that could be ongoing and that allow the council to activate, or the option to activate, a longer-range waste reduction plan. One simple, one simple RFP guidelines have been set. It shouldn't require much administration. A separate entity such as the Conservation Commission could vet proposals and make recommendations for the most compelling projects. The council could then award the projects deemed most effective. This initiative seems like a perfect opportunity to engage existing community efforts and inspire new waste solutions. Perhaps inviting our teachers, school eco-clubs, nonprofits to submit proposals for projects with modest budgets, say $500 to $5,000, but with mighty impact. Another approach might be to invest the funds in a larger project or projects with long-term benefits to Groton. The cost of waste removal per ton is increasing, and these funds could be invested in an efficiency-focused waste reduction roadmap for Groton. For example, a pilot composting program, perhaps modeled on Stonington's, in which food waste is collected and processed, then transformed into reusable energy. We recommend David Aldridge of SCARA as an expert resource who's led successful composting and waste reduction programs in dozens of eastern Connecticut towns. Finally, fellow Connecticut towns are demonstrating wonderful creativity in their NIPS-funded efforts. New London purchased dozens of new downtown trash bins, including solar-powered compactors that can hold up to 150 gallons of waste. Hartford funded a program that pays formerly incarcerated residents to pick up litter and clean vital commercial corridors across the city. Some towns' funds are supporting recycling coordinator positions. Others have partnered with local nonprofits and schools on litter cleanups. In closing, we're excited to see Groton use this opportunity as a win-win for strengthening the town's waste reduction efforts while engaging as many of Groton's communities as possible, and we look forward to the council's NIPS discussion later this month. Thank you as always for your service and have a wonderful Fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, Susan Freddie, followed by Andre Baumgartner.
I am Susan Freddie. My husband and I live at 33 Steamboat Wharf, downtown historic Mystic. I'm here to support the 2023 Property Reuse Committee RFP process. But let me say, I also want to support the gentleman who was bringing up the problems of downtown. It was a year ago when 30 of us from the downtown surrounding, the Mystic Museum of Art parking lot came to tell you of the numerous problems we have had of public urination in the gardens, not only my own garden, but other gardens in downtown Mystic, of noise coming out of bars where we had for years tried to have reasonable conversations with the owners, and they didn't care. A lack of police response when we call about problems such as noise in the parking lot two, three o'clock in the morning. People drunk, they leave behind trash and cans, that there's no program to clean it up. And the Mystic Museum of Art is not cleaning up their own parking lot. And citizens are going out early in the morning. I know when I go out to garden, I'm always picking up trash. The noise is just unbearable, and now we are in the season of open-air bars. The rampant development of, I mean, that yellow building on Water Street, oh, it's a pretty building, but it belongs on Block Island. It is totally out of the characteristic of downtown Mystic. And my husband and I have lived in this condominium for, since 1989, so over 30 years. And we always, if somebody wanted to put a lemonade stand on the corner of Bank Square, we would get a certified notice of what the proposal was. Any kind of building, any kind of change, we were notified. That yellow building went up with no notice, and it went up in record time because something was fishy going on. And where is the building inspector? Pizza Hut put in a new addition? They only had two bathrooms originally. One went out of commission. They never got it fixed. They're goons at the door, simply told people, "Go out into the bushes, my people."
Can you speak to the microphone?
And it came to my garden.
Excuse me, ma'am? Yes, thank you.
And that new addition has no, no additional bathrooms. There's just a lot of, lot of issues. But my husband and I are tonight particularly interested in supporting the 2023 Property Reuse Committee RFP, RFP process. And we strongly recommend that you, as the Groton Town Council, adopt this 2023 report in its entirety, in recognition that the majority of Groton citizens support, support measured growth, livable conditions, and transparency in town council actions, which, as many speakers here tonight have made plainly clear, you are not following.
One minute remains.
I further call for a referendum in the next election process this fall to show and demonstrate to you the community's support for this commission's report and that the referendum call for the adoption and seal the adoption of the 200, 2023 RFP report. Thank you.
Thank you. Andre Baumgartner, followed by Dane Stevenson.
Andre Baumgartner, 544 D Schenacostet Road. Thank you for allowing me to address the council this evening. It's great to see many familiar faces, and it's also an honor to represent you up in Hartford. We had a very productive session, and I look forward to continuing to work together to move our community forward. I'm writing to express my strong support for the proposed town-owned property reuse evaluation policy and process document drafted by the Property Reuse Committee. This policy promotes sustainable and inclusive growth and is a vital step towards effectively managing surplus town property by aligning its implementation with our long-term strategic plans. I would like to recognize the Property Reuse Committee Chair, Dave McBride, for his focus of methodical leadership on drafting this document. I would also like to thank Councilors Portia Bordelon, starting with her referral, and Scott Westervelt for their thoughtful participation as committee members. In my time on the town council, I was impressed by the great number of volunteer citizens from various boards and commissions who lent their experience to this committee. We continue to thank those volunteers for their time. The town-owned property reuse evaluation policy and process outlined in this document is commendable for its comprehensive approach and commitment to inclusive and transparent decision-making. It establishes an advisory committee and encourages the involvement of various stakeholders, ensuring that our community's voices are heard throughout the process. What makes this policy unique is its consideration of multiple goals. By addressing housing needs, enhancing resiliency and sustainability, divide, diversifying the tax base, and promoting an improved quality of life, this policy takes a holistic and forward-thinking approach to property evaluation and disposition. Transparency and accountability are central to this policy. Open meetings and adherence to freedom of information requirements ensure transparency, while written responses, reports from relevant agencies and commissions promote oversight. This process fosters public trust and allows residents to stay informed and engaged. The policy's review and recommendation process is another strength. By involving representatives from different bodies and providing detailed justifications for recommendations, the policy ensures a comprehensive and well-informed evaluation of properties. The inclusion of majority and minority opinions encourages, encourages a balanced, balanced assessment of community inputs. The final decision on property disposition involves public information, meetings, hearings, and approval by the town council. This ensures that all interested parties have the opportunity to participate in the process and that the final decision is made in the best interests of the community. I believe that this policy is a valuable asset to our community, and I urge you to adopt a PRUC 2023 policy in place of the 2021 policy. I also understand that there is an interest within the town council to disband the Groton Sustainability and Resilience Task Force. I believe this is a grave mistake. The Groton Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, GRSTF, is a group of volunteers who are dedicated to making Groton a more resilient and sustainable community. They were established in February 2019 by the Groton Town Council as a tool for local climate action. We are a community that will face a 20-inch sea level rise by 2050. We need to continue harnessing the expertise of the dozens of individuals of, who have unique life experiences and concern for mitigating the impacts of climate change to our town. Today, GRSTF works to deploy natural sciences, engineering, legal, financial, and best policy practices to recommend projects that will improve the resilience of Groton's natural and built environments. The GRSTF also educates the public about climate change and our threats to Groton's resilience and works to reduce the loss of life, property, natural systems, and ecological, ecological damage from high-impact events.
One minute remains.
Last week, the Groton Sustainable, Sustainability Task Force outlined some of the challenges facing our community and infrastructure needs. Should there be an interest within this council to restructure the scope of work for the task force, perhaps consider establishing a flood prevention, climate resilience, and erosion control board sanctioned by Connecticut General Assemblies. The board may consider, the board may consider all applicable regional and municipal hazard mitigation plans, resilience plans, and identifications of vulnerable communities, as well as all applicable municipal plans of conservation and development. They may also consult with CIRCA, based right here in our backyard at Yukon Avery Point. Nevertheless, the GRSTF is essential to Groton's future. Climate change is real and a present danger, and Groton needs a dedicated team of experts working to protect our community from its impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on the list, I have Dane Stevenson.
Dane, Dane Stevenson, 35 North Street. I don't usually come to very many of these, but I just want to come out and say I would support the 2023 PRC procedure. Personally, I, I'm not sure I've been on the record saying this, but with these town properties, I, I don't understand what the, the excitement is to get them into the hands of private developers. I mean, ideally, the town should be doing with its properties what is best for the town. If it's housing, we should be providing housing for people. We own the, we own the property, bring it to referendum, see if people want to spend their money on it, and, and, you know, build up, uh, living spaces for people. I mean, that's how you look at, I believe it was Venice, they, they don't have a housing problem because they just give housing to people for low rent and stuff like that. So that's really a goal of the community, it's something that we could achieve. Instead of just giving it to crooks that are just gonna, you know, cut corners of construction and make buttloads of money off of rents, we could be doing something good for the town with our properties. But seeing as that's probably never going to happen, I'll at least settle for a good procedure where we have the residents of the community weighing in and making sure that we avoid any embarrassing stories in the newspaper or any frivolous lawsuits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've reached the end of the list. If there's anyone present who would like to speak at this time, please approach the podium.
Good evening. Ian Thomas, 24 Jefston Drive, RTM District 3, and spouse of Councilor Bordelon, for full disclosure. Real quick, it's my understanding that Councilor McBride sent a referral regarding, regarding a noise ordinance at some point, and... at some point, and Councillor Bordelon made a referral for a light trespass ordinance, and I'm curious to know the status of those referrals, if they've received the two votes to support it getting on the agenda, and if so, when is it due to come up on the, when are those items due on the agenda, town mayor and town manager? If you could speak to that during communication of reports, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Also, please do confirm on the Councillor Parker referral that to dissolve the Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force, my understanding, I'm just curious to know who did vote in support of that. I hear it did get the two votes, and was it Councillors Franco and Jones who voted to support that referral? And when is that coming to the agenda? I'm sure GOSA and GCA and various other conservation groups would be interested to know. Appreciate the comments from my fellow RTM member, J.C. Ambroise, spelled A-M-B-R-O-I-S-E, and I heard him refer to a letter that he had published in The Day, and I would encourage everyone to take him up on the invitation and search his name on theday.com. His name appears in his pages often over the past number of years. You all can learn a lot about Mr. Ambroise, who is also the Chair of the Democratic Committee. Also, I wanted to share that I received an email from Councillor Jacob regarding my decorum. He was quite concerned with my expressions of frustration as I watched the farce of a Cal meeting here in person last week, as the majority committed a grave injustice against the PRUC 2023 draft document. Councillor Jacob seemed to be confused as to how to interpret my actions. Please think of it as nothing more than a referee throwing a flag on the play for bad-faith parliamentary parlor tricks that prevented a fair debate and due process, which was, which the PRUC draft document deserved. Decorum is based on fundamental respect for the process and procedure. If a process or procedure is not being conducted in a fair, equitable, or just manner, then any call for decorum is much a farce as the illegitimate proceedings have precipitated a perceived break of decorum. What is more disrespectful, a person tossing their hat to the ground and muttering under their breath, or the majority of this council tossing out 15 months of work by well-respected individuals from the community who created a document in good faith in response to overwhelming demand from the community for a reform in policy and procedure on a certain issue? The mayor said he'd vote with whichever side he thought would win, but overlooks the hypocrisy and disingenuous arrangements of the agenda item. The way the agenda item was constructed for the Cal vote on June 27th was designed to create a conflict where there needed to be none. The mayor is directly responsible for this, as it is his purview how to construct the agenda items, in consultation with the town manager. And herein lies a problem for the informed observer and the general public at large. When the PRUC first presented their draft document on 3/28 this year, the majority of councillors who had not yet interacted with the document did provide some notes, however heated and ill-informed they might have been. The session culminated with a suggestion by Councillors Franco, Jones, and Cassieri to toss everything out and revert to the source document of the three-page 2021 draft. This was followed quickly by Mayor Melendez urging
One minute remains.
the critical councillors to send their suggested edits to the PRUC by email or attending a meeting in the next two months where the PRUC would make their best efforts to incorporate the changes in the document. None of those councillors participated. No one submitted any comments beyond what was said in the meeting, which the PRUC did do their best effort to try to incorporate into the document. Had you read it, you might have noticed. The arrangement of the agenda item was in direct conflict of the mayor's own stated request. The mayor could have simply just put the 2023 document in as the only agenda item to be considered as a workshop, where it could be vetted, edited, reviewed, and then presented to the public, receive a hearing, receive more comment, and then you guys can vote on it. Two readings with edits. If you want to slash it down to the 2021 document, you should have brought a red pen and done it piece by piece. The public deserves to know what you think.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak at this time, please approach the podium. We've already discussed this. Is there, is there a, is there anyone else online? No?
Can we take a recess?
John, I can speak. I have a question.
I can speak, correct, John?
At 8:00.
I can speak as a resident, is that correct? No, John? No response. Same.
Council's back from recess at 8:12. Recess began at 8:00.
Can't hear you.
Portia Bordelon, 24 Jefferson Drive. For full disclosure, I'm a Groton Town Councillor. Right now, I'm speaking as a taxpayer resident of 24 Jefferson Drive. It is so hard to sit up there and be part of a council where only two years ago, many of the folks up there, with the exception of a few, were looking to remove me from this council because they said I was too aggressive, too loud, too outspoken, and spoke too much. So we ran a campaign. Well, I'm back. The people spoke, and yet, it is so hard to get anything through up here. I tried to extend the olive branch to this committee, to this council. Thankfully, for Councillor McBride, who was willing to chair this, knowing that it was going to be controversial because it was coming only with my name on it as a referral that I was resurrecting that had sat for quite some time. But yet, as a new councillor, he chaired it on in good faith, along with Councillor Westervelt and many other members involved. We had a chance here before us to work together, to look at ways to amend things. We could have took the 2023 document, this council could have took the 2023 document, and stripped it down and added something. To add nothing is just, I don't understand. And I'm sure you could have found, as councillors that are up here that are agreeing to the 2021 document, none of your opinion is even in there. Are you okay with all the councillors' opinion of the former council? I'm not. I'm not. We should be looking at ways to amend. You know what? I didn't expect that whole document to go through, nor should it. Because it nor should it, because we should be doing our due diligence by revising it, looking at it, and finding ways to meet each other. It shouldn't be personal up here. It should be professional and about policy. If it's truly about policy and not just where it comes from, there would have been some phone calls to councillors like there used to be in the past. Phone calls used to happen, ringing off the hook after meetings. "Council Bordelon, where do you stand on this? What do you want to do with that? How do we move forward?" You're allowed to talk one-on-one, come up with a plan. I have not been involved in any form of discussion. No one's contacted me and asked me any way to make that document more tangible to their taste. It would have been actually a little bit more foolproof if someone had possibly made a referral or made an amendment on the floor to add in at least one item from the 2023 document, to try to make it look as if you're going to bend a little bit. Again, I can't thank Council McBride, councillor Westervelt, and all the other people that were involved to try to bring something for the people, by the people, and what they ask for. Lastly, the referral process. We have to send our referrals, and they'll probably change the rules now because I'm speaking because I found a loophole, see, because I read my rules. We did it on the RTM, no problem, because I am taxpayer first before being elected. I wouldn't have to be considered disruptive if you guys in race meeting accepted me. It seems disruptive to someone who doesn't like what is doing. One of the things I've learned, if we're going to heal, you have to be willing to accept the past and move forward. And moving forward is accepting that maybe some things worked on right. Maybe some people, like the community, spoke and not the committee. The community said, "We want her there." Overwhelmingly. This council has a chance to get the people's work done. Stop making it personal, and let's make it about policy. And let's move this town in a direction that is good for all people here to live, work, and play. That's how we get things done. Every time something's changed, a new rule comes out. The rule committee meets, and you're not allowed to go talk. You're not allowed to talk, and the rules tell you about a referral that you sent in? Is that democracy? Is that democratic? No. Then referrals now are done behind public eye. So if you want to make the town red tonight, I send a referral. The referral gets sent to John. John says, "Portia wants to paint the town red." And then we wait for two councillors to approve it. That's all done behind the public eye. Councillor Parker, right after the meeting, she sent a referral to dissolve, dissolve the Sustainability Commission. And it got two supports from Franco and Jones. Why is that not being reported here tonight? Every referral that comes in, if it sees the light of day or not and gets the support, should be reported. It shouldn't be me having to be involved with someone who's elected, like myself, and go into my email and tell my constituents, like the community, that this referral is coming down the chain. They're the last to know. That shouldn't be good democracy. That should not be allowed. That referral should be here, talked, spoke about, and agreed upon in front of the eye. If you're going to put it through, let's own it. Let's work together up here and get the people's work done.
Thank you. Council Westervelt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I am speaking as a citizen, and I am speaking on behalf of the Mystic Coral School advocates. I would like to make a correction, or excuse me, what I believe should be a correction to this agenda item last week, in that no one in Mosa leadership or anyone in Mosa recalls having been approached by a councillor and having the 2021 document read to them, given to them, even discussed with them, and ever accepting it. Everyone that I've, pardon me, everyone that I've spoken to in Mosa says that that does not happen, or that did not happen. No one recalls that happening. So I believe that that was an error from last week, and I just want to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, he didn't state his name for the record.
I need, I need your address.
I apologize. Thank you very much. I apologize. My name is Scott Westervelt, Seven Boulder Court, Mystic, Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time, please approach the podium. Need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Jim Wagona, I live in sixteen Brook Street, Nolank. I want to speak about my concerns over the motion that we'd stop thinking about resilience and sustainability in the town of Groton. My, for the last decade or so, I've committed my professional work to climate change, adaptation, and resilience. I'm the executive director of CIRCA, and I'm chair of the Science Advisor Committee for the Government Council on Climate Change. And it was me who came up with this twenty inches that Andre referred to earlier as a process of analysis that I was charged to do by legislature. So I live just down the hill, and so when I heard tonight that there was consideration that you would stop this committee that had been established by citizens of Groton under their, largely by their own initiative, and set it aside without having a report for steps to move forward, seems to me to be rather foolish. And it's really inconsistent with almost every other town in the state of Connecticut and in many other parts of the world. The biggest challenge, I feel now, that we'll be facing the people who sit in your seats ten to fifteen years from now will be what to do about problems like were raised this afternoon with Gravel Street and Pearl Street. And those places are flooding now, and it's unquestionably they're going to flood more frequently. And in Nolank, there are towns, there's roads there that are flooding. And these problems are going to cost hundreds of millions of dollars. And they're going to affect tax rate everywhere in the state and in this town. And so instead of talking about what you, about shutting down a commission, I think we should be establishing how you're going to ask for a report that's actionable in the short term, in the medium term, in the long term. And Mr. Baumgartner suggested you consider the new authority the town has to establish flood and erosion control boards for the purposes of resilience and funding development. And that's an example of a thing that I think you should be doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If anyone would like to speak at this time, please approach the podium.
I think I'm going to speak. Rachel Franco, twenty-eight Topsail Lane. I'm a town councillor here, speaking as a citizen. And you know what? I have received many phone calls regarding this council and how painful it is to sit through it and watch these meetings. And to how late they go, and how sometimes it seems like one councillor, it's one councillor speaking, most, majority of the whole, whole meeting. So as I've heard some things tonight, I would like to say the 2021 plan was created by some people that seem to be against it, like our state representative. A state representative helped create this. And then we elected him to the state of Connecticut. So if he helped create this policy, isn't that good too? And you know what? Some of the councillors up here as well did create the same policy. And then I've heard from some of these citizens in the community who are saying that this council should have sent emails and done all this work. That is not transparent, to send their information via email to a committee. That is behind closed doors doing the business of the town. So when you talk about transparency, I want you, as a council, to do it here. I also, I also hear things about the issues with the Sustainability Committee and the concerns. I am happy that there is a director of sustainability and resiliency in our town, and that she's a director, very highly qualified, highly qualified. But the committee, if you watch some of their meetings, there are some very large concerns that is happening in that committee. And there are people that are being probably disenfranchised due to that committee. And when I hear things from people in my community that they describe a house in Paquonic Bridge as the Cracker Box Houses, I have an issue with that. And I hope that this council will look into these matters and some of the other issues that are going on within that committee of how they, they look at our community. So I would thank you and wish you would look into that as a citizen, asking my town council to take care of that. And you know what? I think all of you were elected to do the people's work. You are elected. You were chosen by the people in our community to do the work. We have committees, and we ask sometimes for their recommendations. And that's what they are, recommendations. But you were the people that were chosen to make the decisions, all of you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak at this moment, please approach the podium. Okay, seeing none, we will close the receipt of citizens petitions. Onto the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar on the agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will take place unless cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on a motion to adopt. I'll make a motion to move the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three special meeting minutes and the special trust fund contributions from May and June. So moved. Second, Jones. Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto communication and reports. Councillor Cassieri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My communications report will be a little different tonight. Groton friends, neighbors, and communities, it is with great sadness that I announce my resignation from the Groton Town Council. Tonight will be my last meeting. It has been an honor representing the great people of Groton for the past term. I've been granted an opportunity to enter an educational program to further my next career. This is a rigorous and intensive program requiring attention and time that I will no longer be able to dedicate to the town council. When I ran for office in 2021, I did not know that I would find what I wanted to do next professionally within my term. However, I am grateful for this experience and moving forward on my next endeavors. I am grateful to the residents of Groton for allowing me to represent them for as long as I did, on first the RTM and now the council. I became involved in politics because I wanted to be an important voice for families as I was raising my young children in the town of Groton, while also championing public safety, human service-oriented matters, and striving to be a calm, rational voice by sticking to facts and asking tough questions. As I served on this body, my children watched mommy walk out the door to attend meetings. They asked about government and decision-making, and they knew mom was giving a voice to families and making important decisions. I am grateful. They saw me actively participating in this role, and I hope it shapes their future decision-making and shows them the importance of being involved in your own community. I am proud of the things I sought out to accomplish and the council ultimately supported. Social workers for our police department, supporting human service-oriented programs with ARPA dollars, establishing a performance arts commission, supporting police fire EMS, supporting enhancing parks and recreational activities, and allocating crucial dollars to fight the opioid epidemic right here in Groton. Tonight, we will also be voting to implement a, what I hope to be a life-saving opioid educational awareness program. I see these as successes. As I leave, I hope this council and future councils will continue to support the children of Groton and those that work with them. The kids are our future. We'll support our police fire and EMS. They are literally the people who save our lives. Support our amazing town staff and make significant efforts to retain them. And I hope you will think of what's best for Groton first before anything else. To the people of Groton, thank you for this opportunity. It has been an absolute honor to serve this town. This will be my last speech for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parker?
Thank you. Received various communications, all topics that were mentioned this evening and a couple of others. I attended the Fitch graduation, so congratulation graduates, and attended the Juneteenth event at the town of Groton. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Franco?
Thank you. I had many communications as well, but I'm not going to go into those. I would like to thank Councillor Cassieri for her dedication to being on the council and all that she's done and the hard work that she's put in for the people of our community. And I thank you for everything you've done, and I wish you much luck in your endeavors in the future. And thank you. Much thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I also received many of the different, same communications that other councillors did. I would like to thank Councillor Cassieri for all that she has done, all her support. Been a great trusted partner through the RTM and here in the council. As we did, along with Councillor Jacob, walked almost every single street in the town of Groton. We learned a lot about the town, its people, its places, everything that went on there and built a great relationship through eleven months, eleven weeks, I'm sorry, eleven weeks of sweating last, last summer, two summers ago. I've often called on her for information about public safety, an area that she's an expert on, being a former police officer. I agree with her calm, rational voice. I've supported her programs, which I thought had been fantastic. She's just been a great trusted partner in being on the council, and I will miss her. And much success in your teaching career. I'm sure you will have lots of great kids with, have lots of great experiences with you. So thank you very much, and it's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McBride?
Thank you. Congratulations, and I wish you well in your future.
Thank you.
It's great, great news that you're moving on, and I hope everything works out well for you, so thank you. Also attended the Groton Annual Meeting on Saturday. Heard from some constituents down there regarding taxation concerns that they have that I need to look into specifically relating to many residents there. Feel that they should be involved more with the ability to vote in the elections if they're taxpayers, but our system doesn't allow that. So I'm going to be looking into that and digging into some more questioning regarding that matter. And also received many, many emails regarding the Property Reuse Committee and the decision this council made last week. And as we heard tonight, I just, many people reiterated concerns with how that process evolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelon?
Thank you. I just want to wish councillor Cassieri good luck on, on her next endeavor in, in career. I do, I too share some of the same memories as councillor Jones does. When I first got involved, and Cassieri was a new county, new RTM or new possible pelete for her office, I remember walking all through her neighborhood, through the city, through the town, and then she'd go out for a run after. I'd be like, okay, I can't keep up. I remember her being a friend to me when I was sick with cancer, with councillor Franco walking over the neighborhood. Again, they would say to me, "Can you continue?" And I'd say, "I'm okay." And my husband, I'd call him, and he'd drop off an egg or a tablespoon of peanut butter and some water. And I remember being a very close, connected group. We knocked a lot of doors, and we swept the council to get our seats and, and RTM seats as well. So even though we leave on separate paths this time, when we weren't knocking last time together, and we didn't have that same thing, I can't say enough how much I respect you and really, truly wish you the best and hope that, you know, down the road, that maybe with this change, there's some mending that can happen, because I duly respect you. So best wishes to you. With that, communications, I received the email from the town manager, as stated, from councillor Parker, stating that she'd like to dissolve the Sustainability Committee. The statements that were made tonight, I hadn't heard prior to that, that councillor Franco said. So that was also a communication that I was not aware of, of what those words, so I would love that to commence the writing. And that I got another email that Jones and Franco supported Parker's referral. I did receive communications about the Property Reuse Committee. I received communications throughout, like trespass, noise. I also did receive a letter that everyone seemed to get, that has not been mentioned yet, that came out from a resident stating some concerns about how the council's running, as well as her own feelings. Once again, I'm not validating, I'm just speaking what came forward. And then the town manager said he would contact him. And then the town manager said he would contact him if you'd like to know more about that person. So I did, and he responded that there was some police runnings and some other things. I don't personally understand what that means. They have a right to make a comment. If it's true or not, then we can validate that letter later. But that was a communication I received. I received some concerns, people got their tax bills, people are concerned about how the mill rate, why we did not try to stagger the increase over time, and that's all we're putting out. Thank you.
Thank you. There you go.
Sorry, Ed. Thank you. Likewise, I would like to commend Counselor Casiri on everything that she's done. I have to say, Counselor Casiri, that your attention to detail was refreshing in the point that I felt that you approached everything you did, and you had all of the i's dotted and the t's crossed, that you did an outstanding job. And I really appreciate that, and I've tried to learn something from that. I also, your presentation, while it may have been without emotion, you could see an underlying passion, and I do appreciate that. From, my dog and I, we love it. If you stop by, let us know how you're doing. I know she would love another pet from you. You know, just say hi and let us know how you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Counselor Jacome.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Casiri, just like Counselor Jones said, we knocked across the town and it was my first full experience, and we learned a lot through blood, sweat, and tears and had a good time. And I know you will do amazing in your future endeavors, so I wish you best of luck and take care. And I know you won't hesitate to reach out to the council if a problem arises, so please stay in touch. Similar communications, some emails I got, the Groton PD received post-see accreditation. I did send an email out to Representative Thomas and Representative Surf based on the decorum, which I thought was completely inappropriate there, and you heard Representative Thomas speak on that. I'll leave it at that. It was sent with Betsy to include in the record, so if anybody wanted to get that letter and email, it's available. I did receive the PD and press release, governance letter, a GOCA hearing request, Mystic Patrol information, and referral requests as well. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations, Counselor Casiri. It's, it's sort of bittersweet because, you know, I think, I think it's a loss for the council, but I really do believe that the amount of good that you can do in the field of education will far outweigh whatever you can do here. So just congratulations. I'm super excited for you and the future that you have. You speak of trying to inspire your children, one of your motivations for coming out. I believe you've done that, and I believe that you'll inspire many other people's children as well in your new career. I remember first meeting you as well. We're both District Five. I was running for council, you were running for RTM, and even though you were brand new, I learned a lot from you knocking those doors, because just the way, the confidence you had, the passion you spoke with, it was something that I tried to emulate, you know, from, from that moment forward. So, thank you for all the things you taught me. I consider you a friend, because friends are not scared to tell you what, what needs to be heard, even, even when there are hard things to be heard. And, and you definitely do that for me. You've made me a better mayor, a better counselor, a better person. So just keep being you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto clerk of the representative town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The representative town meeting met in June, and at that meeting, we received a resignation from District Seven RTM member Jackie Cop. She no longer lives in the town, so she has to forfeit her seat. So there's a vacancy for, it has to be a Democrat that fills that seat. And if anyone's interested in filling that seat, they should contact my office. And they may not, I'm, I'm understanding they're not going to be meeting in July, so the next meeting will be the second Wednesday in August.
All right. Clerk of the council.
Lots of things going on. I want to give my condolences to you, Mayor, for the loss of your grandfather this morning. It's riveting, it's hard to deal with, and I understand. We also received some resignations, one from Meredith Kee from the Community Development Advisory Council. That's a group that meets about four times a year to review a grant that the town vies for. And also, Mr. Donaldson, Levenson, from the Historic District Commission, he resigned also. He's 10 years of service on that commission. There you go.
Thank you. Town manager.
Good evening. I'd also like to thank Counselor Casiri, and she would have been a very good attorney. No offense.
Take that as a compliment.
One, I was asked about the noise and the light referrals. The noise referral does, did have the two requisite supports. The light pollution has not received support at this time. I would like to also mention the town has not been served in any lawsuit involving a developer, just to make that clear. Let's see. We had talked about bulky waste. Recently at a council meeting, town staff's been working on a plan. I anticipate coming back to the council pretty soon. It was Counselor Bordaline's referral. Colonel Ledger, Bell Site LLC, did receive City Planning and Zoning Commission approval on June 23rd. It'll go to the city council, and then if you recall, it actually has come back to the town council for actually fully selling the property or transferring the property. As a reminder, that was for 64 residential multifamily units. Let's see. Traffic safety grant, we had, through the COG, we had applied for a traffic safety grant for the intersection of 117 and 184. We actually have quite a lot of crashes at that site. Originally, we were, some good and some bad news. Originally, we were told we didn't make the cut. Subsequently, we were told we did, but there's a brand-new rule that you now have to pay 20% match. That's a brand-new for this next year. So that'll be something that'll come to the council, and you'll have to make a decision. The total project cost is a little over $2 million, that meaning the council's match would be about just over $400,000, so I anticipate that'll come fairly soon to the council. Triton Square, former Sealy School, they prevailed in court recently on a zoning issue, and then they've started development, started construction last week, so you'll see some stuff going on there now. Let's see, TVCCA Building Update, just to let you know, there's a Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing next Tuesday, July 11th, at 7:00 PM, to hear and act upon a special use permit to demolish two existing structures and to construct a new 23,000-square-foot child daycare center. Of course, there's a lot of other steps, you know, we'd have to have at least other things, et cetera. And they're still trying to figure out a plan for where they'd actually operate out of while that construction is going on. They had looked at Claude Chester, Dusby Butler, but there's too much work that has to be done to those to do that, so they're approaching the schools right now to see if there's any space for the schools. USS Groton Sail, the monument that's going to go by the Library and Senior Center, Thrive 55, excuse me, they're submitting a variance to allow encroachment of the memorial structures within, within the front and rear setbacks. What it would be is a reduction would be to set front yard setbacks and rear setbacks to 10 feet to accommodate that plan that you've previously saw. And, and just to mention the noise complaints, you know, I've regularly talked with the police chief on issues there, and I'll talk to him about the complaints brought up today. And I do think I saw Officer Afifi went out, I believe I saw him go out to, with one of the people I talked from Water Street, but Officer Afifi is also, I believe, now a community officer, police senior, community service officer, is that what it is here? Community policing, yeah. So he's actually going to be focused a lot on Mystic, so looking forward to see what can be done there. And I believe that's it.
Any questions?
Sure.
I have the floor.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, was this meeting, the one on the Monday before 4th of July, the month, six, I mean, 7/23, oh my goodness, was this scheduled last year and approved by this full council? Voted on?
It was, at the end of the year, yes. Because we've never held a meeting on 4th of July.
Right. And have we stopped citizens' comments and limited them to only one per month? Have we changed some kind of policy?
Not, it's always been that since before I got here. I don't know if, if at some point in the past it may have been different. I don't know.
Thank you.
You have two town council meetings a month.
When was that? That was not since I've been there.
That was probably before, yeah, 2015. Well, before I was town clerk, and it was probably in the mid-'90s.
The mid-'90s. Okay, so it's been a long time. It didn't happen by this council, though, right? Correct?
No, previous.
Thank you. In, in the, the reused policy for town property, this is a policy that can change and be amended in the future, is that correct?
Of course.
It's not like it's a, it's not an ordinance of any sort where we have to really go through a lot of hoops to change it. It's something that a council can change in the future and make amendments to.
That's correct.
And also, would it be possible, I don't know if I need people to give support for this, but can we get a property update on, down in Noank, what has happened with that property down there? It's been a while since we've heard.
Oh, Riverview?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
No sir?
You want to?
I mean, you could just, like.
I think we already have a referral in the list on that, actually. I think that's on our list.
I just wanted a quick, because I, I know where we were last time and just where we are now. Thank you.
I believe Counselor Bordaline, if I'm not mistaken, hit.
Yeah.
Yep, so, yes, that's on the list, yeah.
The one that's not on.
Yeah.
My question is, I had reached out to the town manager asking, it was offered many times to us in the past if we wanted to go with the police department into a tour or ride, other counselors had partaken in that. I reached out and I was told that it was suspended at this time. Is that reopened yet?
I'd have to ask, I don't believe they're doing any tours right now, but I'd have to double check with Chief Fasaro.
Because it should open back up. I think it should be equal and fair access for everybody. My other question is, wasn't, and I can follow up with it. There was a referral at one time, and it was to the Rules Committee to discuss including another public comment at one point, but it went nowhere. Is that correct?
That's my recollection. I mean, I went to Rules Committee, but, and it didn't make it out of committee, is my understanding.
Right. And is there a way that you can report on referrals that are given to you under your manager's report, even if they don't get the light of day or the refer, or the support? For example, my referral, who supported it? I need two, but I don't even know who supported it thus far. So if I was going to seek support from somebody else, I'm kind of like not in the loophole. So is there a way that we could?
Yeah, I could add that.
Open it up, because I think as soon as a referral goes in, there should be a section here, somebody, either the mayor or the manager, if you feel you're comfortable, you would just, since they're coming through you, you would say that I received a referral to dissolve the Sustainability Committee, and it received, these two people supported it. It should be, it might be done in email, but then I was just wondering why we're not bringing it to the council.
I could certainly do that.
I think that's a great.
Just to be clear, though, referrals can be made here at this time.
I'm not depicting that. I'm just saying when they're done that way, though, then nobody knows about it, until it makes it on the agenda.
But any counselor can, can speak their agenda.
And when they don't, there should be a process. That's all.
It's easy to list it, though.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because the group that's involved in that referral doesn't find out until it makes the agenda. That's too late. My other question is sidewalks, again, in areas that are missing, is there going to be any plan to look at those and make sure buttons and sidewalks are working, or what, do I need to make a referral, or is that something you can contact the state about? I brought up the one over at the corner of Quannick Road and another state road.
Yeah, and that's been brought up to them previously. They're not interested in making a change, and that's been brought up a couple of times, I believe, with the state.
The other one, we always talk about the Mystic Bridge with Stonington, and there's no movement, and there was talk from the fire department that they have trouble getting around because if there's a parking spot there, it is on the Stonington side, and there's all this talk, we'll get back, collaborate. Has there been any more talk about what the plan is, and have we sent a letter in support of putting a light there yet?
Of a light? I don't know if the council's given that direction, but.
I thought it was going to be research, to talk about ways to collaborate with Stonington to make it safer for the, the fire trucks to maneuver through that area. And one of the suggestions that I had made was a blinking light where you could come to a complete stop, and in that way, the cars would have to stop, and then the truck could.
Probably the parking spots are, would still be an issue, so it's probably taking out a couple of parking spots that's needed. And I've heard that buildings for sale right now, by the way.
Yeah, I was just wondering, was there any report back from the first select woman?
I haven't heard back, but I can certainly reach out to her.
And coastal access, I'm still receiving emails from Mr. Fitzgerald and concerns with signage and things down there. Is there any new updates on any of that?
No, as I've mentioned before, he's absolutely correct. There used to be those signs, but as the council, we spent about a year and a half on these issues, maybe two years, there's no other signage that we could put in in other locations legally, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of committee reports. Personnel appointments, Chair Jacome.
Thank you, Mayor. The Personnel Appointments Committee met on 6/20/23. The minutes are up, and the video is also up on GMTV, and we'll be discussing the appointment here on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Bulls, Chair Parker.
No meeting.
Thank you. Public Safety Chair McBride.
No information, no new information. The next scheduled meeting was for July 11th. I'll just need to confirm with Counselor Franco if she's able to attend to have that meeting now that Counselor Casiri won't be available, so, but that's the current date, July 11th.
Thank you.
Regarding that vacant seat, I'm interested in serving on that committee. I just want to put that on the record to the mayor.
Thank you. Onto new business. Various appointments, reappointments.
Motion, resolution making the following appointments/reappointments to authorize ABC's authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. ABC's resolved that the town council appoints the following individuals to authorize ABC's. As noted, the appointment of James Stephanis-D to Beach Road, Parks and Rec Commission, term expiring 12/31/24. I so move.
Second. Jones.
Moved by Jacome, seconded by Jones.
I'll just say quickly, thank you, Mayor, is that, you know, he's a volunteer, he came up, if you didn't want to see it, he spoke briefly to the Personnel Appointments Committee. You know, he's very involved with the Thrive 55, and he has some time on his hands with retirement, so he's definitely looking forward to serving and bringing some fresh ideas, and we always appreciate that in volunteers, so I urge support.
Thank you. Counselor Bordaline.
And this is a reappointment?
Appointment.
Appointment, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto property reuse evaluation policy.
I have a point of parliamentary inquiry.
Sure.
So what can be done if someone wanted to make a motion to put the 2023, because my first question, let me start back. My first question is, this doesn't reflect exactly what we were giving at our last meeting, and usually the motions kind of mirror each other. The other motion that we had last week had three options. This one only has the option of the 2021, which, this is usually the pass-through, so I'm just curious as to why. We, we still should have all three options, correct?
Okay. So this is, the, the option that comes here in this packet is the option for, that the Cal recommended. So this motion needs to be put on the floor.
But it doesn't preclude anybody from putting another motion up?
Someone can make an amending motion, correct?
Well, it has to be very minor, else it has to go back to the, you can't bring up the 23. You can make very minor tweaks to the resolution for the 21.
Define minor, please. Because I mean, minor to one is. Because I mean, minor to one is not much.
Yeah, I mean, it can't substant, you know, it can't substantially, substantively change it. The meaning, maybe you could add one more person, like if you had a committee, that's about it. That's about as far as you can, yeah, it'd be very minor, or else it has to go back.
Is there like a word requirement, or, I mean, I guess, I'm not sure what minor means?
Subjective.
Okay, well, you can make a motion, and, and we'll, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll make that call at that point, but first we need to put this motion on the floor.
I still have another question, I'm intrigued.
Okay.
So, we have a motion before us that we can do nothing with, that's not minor, like we can't, we can't, we can't amend it, basically?
That's not true.
Well, I'm just not asking what minor is. If you said a punctuation or a word?
Okay, so first, we're going to put the motion on the floor.
I'll read it, Mr. Mayor.
You can make, you can make an amendment, and then at that time...
Minor amendment.
At that time, you can make whatever amendment you want. At that time, we will decide or just, uh, figure out if it's in order or not, but we need to put it on the floor first.
I can read it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the town-owned property reuse evaluation process, be it resolved that the town council hereby adopts the town-owned property reuse evaluation process, replacing the former policy of the same name. I so move.
Second, Franco.
I have a motion moved by Casiri and seconded by Franco. Councilor Casiri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, was the twenty twenty-one policy reviewed by the attorneys and town staff?
It was, and went through a few meetings with the council. Every time council made changes, we brought it back with those changes.
Thank you. In your opinion, do you believe that the twenty twenty-one policy is going to bring more lawsuits to the town?
No, it's certainly a step up. I mean, it, first, anybody can sue for anything, but...
Correct.
It's certainly a step up, you know, several steps up from what we had before. For instance, I believe it includes requirement for background checks, that type of thing, more public, another public hearing, some of those type of things.
And do you believe it's true that the twenty twenty-one policy was in response to the feedback after the Mystic Education Center, RFP?
It was directly in response, yes.
And with this policy, will staff have oversight over the RFP process?
No, it, it gives more authority, I mean, obviously, we still do our jobs, but it gives authority over the, with the council, yes.
But there's still some staff involvement in the process?
Yeah, of course, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was looking for.
Thank you. Council Boardaline.
I guess what's the most important part of what happened at the Mystic Oral School and drafting this, I was part of the council then, we couldn't move anything else, and that's why it sat for so long, because we couldn't agree that this was a solid document to move forward, in my opinion.
Point of order.
What's a point of order?
That is, uh, basically stating what my thought processes were, or what the council's thought processes were, and you can only speak for yourselves. Thank you.
Okay. Council Boardaline, please...
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm rolling. Please speak on, on your motivations, uh, and not other councillors, past or present.
If you heard me correctly, I said that was my opinion. Did you hear that, Bert?
Yeah, the floor.
Okay, I'm just making sure that you heard that.
Yeah, the floor.
At the time, I didn't have the votes to move anything else. This is where, where it went, and this is where it sat. It didn't, it sat there since twenty twenty-one, and no one brought it up until I made a referral, and thankfully, the mayor at the time agreed to form this committee to research, look at this document, and possibly see ways that it, it could possibly, A, move forward or be enhanced. That's what the catastrophe was charged to do. The council let it sit since then. They didn't move it forward, even though it was vetted by the attorneys, because for some reason, they didn't think it should go through. If it was a great document, it didn't go through.
Point of order.
What's a point of order?
Once again, speaking for my thoughts and motivations on why it didn't go through, and why my, why I didn't send it through. Thank you.
Council, uh, I don't even know how to, just Council Boardaline, just please speak to your specific...
Sure.
Ideas, motivations at the time.
Sure. Well, purposes, everything I'm saying is my thoughts and my opinions. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay.
But you cannot speak for what I'm thinking.
Can I, may I have the floor, please? I'm going to be interrupting again.
Council Boardaline, you have the floor.
Thank you. In my opinion, my thoughts at the time, my, my perception of the council at the time, does that sound better?
No.
No? Is, it wasn't a good document, and that's why it sat there. I felt it wasn't a good document, and that's why it didn't get voted out, because if it did, it would have been vote, it would have been moved. It wasn't. We sat for many, many months as accounts, as a committee, working hard, bringing in all the stakeholders on the front end versus waiting in the past, like we have done. This document from twenty twenty sixteen that we speak of so eloquently does not include those stakeholders. And in fact, some of the councils that are up here today were not even on the council. I find it very strange that nobody up here that wasn't part of it wouldn't have an amendment to put on, whereas your own idea? From a document that sat for several years, you don't have one amendment that you want to put on? Not a punctuation, not a capitalization, not an omission, not a move around, not an addition? It isn't, it just baffles me. It's such a disrespect, in my opinion, to the people who've worked so hard. There's ways in which this could have went forward by adding one line of a compromise from twenty twenty-three, just one line. I'm going to run out of time, since we only get three minutes to write, I'm off to speak on my second term. I encourage this council to look at this and find a way to work together tonight and find an amendment, but I agree, I'm trying to make it be minor, but they're not sure what the minor is, maybe a punctuation, maybe a number. So, basically, this has been stalled out, and we can do nothing. And we can do minor, but no one knows what the definition of minor is. Minor can mean a paragraph, if a document's five pages long. Minor could mean five sentences, minor could mean a page if it's five. That's a loose word called minor, and so I ask for more clarification on that to the town manager. That's my question.
Well, the town attorneys have spoken before to the council, of course, that was an earlier council, but they've spoken to this point to previous councils. It can't, well, you know, it, it, they admit it's very subjective. It can't, it can't, what's a good way of putting it? It can't fundamentally change anything that what's in here is doing. If you, if you said, uh, you want to totally restructure something, no, that's a no-go. It's got to be very little impact.
Council Westerville?
Yes, thank you very much. Couple of things, um, I will not be supporting this motion. A couple of points I'd like to bring up are that, in all honesty, I felt, or, excuse me, I was anticipating that the PRUC document was going to go in front of the town council, and we were going to discuss it, have multiple discussions on this, uh, trim it as necessary, and work on it as a document, as opposed to just, uh, dismiss it out of hand. So I'm somewhat disenfranchised by that. Uh, additionally, I don't believe the twenty twenty-one document actually allows citizen participation to the extent where the town is going to be protected, because there are a lot of people looking out for, you know, the, the town and the best, uh, what is best for the town. Uh, additionally, I heard a comment earlier that emails may not have been forwarded because, uh, they may or may not have been FOI-able or that sort of thing. However, all emails regarding this coming from anyone were read into the record. There should have been no FOI problems with that, so councillors should have been, I believe, free and clear to submit their suggestions, um, and assist with the process as opposed to shut down and not, uh, not assist at all. Also, I, I did ask this at the last meeting, and I still have the question, and, because I can't find it, where the town council specifically issued a mandate that prevented the town staff from marketing town property. I can't find it. I would appreciate if somebody from the town staff, or, uh, if someone could point that out to me, because I can't find where we specifically mandated that the town staff stop promoting town property, which is kind of why everybody wanted to push this aside, because we weren't moving forward, and I completely disagree with that. Thank you very much.
Council Franco?
Thank you. A councillor speaking as a citizen sort of insinuated that, basically, I never spoke to a Moosa member regarding the two thousand twenty-one policy and put in their input into these changes. I would like to notate that there are at least three councillors that are sitting at this table up here that were present when I stayed and spoke to a resident for an hour while they continued campaigning, and then I had multiple conversations with that councillor and went back and forth with them with what we present, we had in the two thousand twenty-one, uh, policy, grabbing their input and adding, um, and changing some things. It's, it's being spoken here. I appreciate that a committee got together and came back with a recommendation, and as such, it is a recommendation, but I have always personally wanted the council to work on this, not send it to committee. I have, um, asked for it to come back in a referral so that this council could work on it at the council meeting. I have publicly stated I will not send my email, an email, what my thoughts were. And from the get-go, when this was sent to the committee, me personally, I was not in favor of it. This was not something that the council voted on sending to a committee. And at the time, I was ready to vote on the two thousand twenty-one, and from my perspective, I think the last council, it was a mistake that they didn't vote on it. But it was towards the end of, uh, um, our term, and the mayor at the time thought, well, let's just send it to the next council, which I think was a mistake. We had put a lot of work into this, and I think it should have been passed then, and I just simply think it's a mistake. And, um, and I am good with just passing the two thousand twenty-one with the possibility to make some amendments in the future, and, um, because there are things definitely in the two thousand twenty-three that I personally am not in favor of. And, um, and because of how this is laid out and how we are doing this, I guess we are not taking this up as a task force on this council of trying to work on this one project. So, I do personally think it's easier to pass the two thousand and one and make the amendments at a future date, instead of trying to amend two thousand twenty-three into something different. I have never felt like I was dismissing the committee. I thank them for what they've done. I appreciate it, but on the other hand, um, this is what I think would be in the best interest of Groton.
Thank you. Council Boardaline?
Um, John, uh, to the town manager, can you project the one-page documents that are currently following? That's my first question. I mean, I think we should see, it's not in the packet, we should see what we're moving from, too. Do we discuss what we have?
Mayor?
Because if this was a great document, we should be able to see the other document we're currently working on.
I just think you have to be careful, you can't discuss the first one, because that's not on the agenda, so...
Okay, that's fine. I just think it should be, it should be, it should have been in the agenda in the fact that that's what I'm trying to reveal. Um, uh, the first letter, the first document, I sat at the town manager and some of the, actually, Patrice Kunitowski, former mayor, back when people were complaining about the schools not making it on to the tax school fast enough. It was a choppy one-page paper that probably predated the mayor, the manager, and there was nothing in there talking about how a timeframe in which a school should turn a building over and, and when. It was just indefinitely. And that grew from what we had before to what we're, they're currently using, which is nothing, really. But it was something. And then this grew under the last council, but not in the, in the level that it should have, and no, it didn't move because nobody wanted to move it, um, at the time. It, it didn't get any votes, and it didn't get, go forward. That's my opinion. It didn't go forward, for whatever reason. And if, and if it felt it should have, then someone should have made a motion to do such. After the whole debacle, folks saw this, this draft and realized that it needed more, and that's what we set out to do. We brought in stakeholders, the people in the community. This document does not involve the community and allow them to have a voice, but they asked for it. We've talked about what the community wanted and what it, what we're, we're tasked to do and how we're elected for the community. The council should be representative of the community. I feel the council should not be represented by our own personal agendas. I, I firmly believe when I look at this document, there's a lot of missing things here. It doesn't explain, how do you, is this property currently being used in the town department? Then what? If it says yes, then what do we do from there? Does the property support the municipal function? What is the municipal function? It's defined in this document? Nope. Where do we find that? Is there a current future, uh, foreseeable use for this town department? Doesn't state anywhere what any of that is. We don't have a master plan. So, I would like to, um, suspend the rules and put the twenty twenty-three motion on the floor like it should have been.
Second, Westerville.
Okay. First of all, you have to just make a motion to suspend the rules.
Or I'd like to, motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Second, Westerville.
Do we need the specific rule being suspended, or is it just enough to say, I make a motion to suspend the rules?
You have to be specific. I believe you have to be specific. It has to be specific.
So, would you like to, I mean, which I had, I'd like to suspend the rules to bring forward the property's twenty twenty-three document, or how would you like to word it?
You just need the rule that you're trying to suspend, I believe. I don't know. Right.
No, I think it's not on the agenda.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so typically cannot be discussed, but if you, if you vote, two-thirds of the body can put something on, I believe.
Yes.
I believe so.
Okay. Only question is, do we need the exact rule that would allow us to do such a thing?
Did the clerk, did the clerk say she was going to put up?
And can I finish, explain why I'm suspending the rules?
Well, we have to find out.
Well, I mean, while you're figuring out, I just want to say why, why I'm giving this one.
Is it debatable?
Uh, motion to suspend the rules is debatable. Yeah.
So, I'll wait for my turn.
Just one second. Okay. While we figure this out, we'll stand in recess. At nine twelve. Counsel's back from recess at 9:22. Okay. So you can make a motion to suspend the rules and just explain what you are trying to achieve. You don't need the, the name of the rule. Two-thirds of a vote, not debatable. So.
I have 27 seconds left. I think it's the fair compromise. We'll be able to basically look at the 2023 and the 2021. And it would allow us, under our last meeting, they both were on the agenda. And it would allow us to pull a little bit out there tonight and show some form of a compromise tonight, even though we can go back and edit it. But just to respect the work of that committee, it'd be nice to see if we could add a few more goals in there, need a little more language to the purpose. So that's why I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to suspend the, oh, you need to say so to do what?
To add the property reuse committee's 2023 draft.
Okay.
McBride, seconds.
Add what?
I'm adding the property reuse committee's draft, 2023, to this meeting tonight.
Okay. I got a motion, a motion to suspend the rules by Council Board along, second by Council Not debatable. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I've got four in favor. Westerville, Borlon, McBride, Melendez, five opposed, zero abstaining.
I'd like to make an amendment.
So that fails. Okay.
I'd like to amend number five, which says promote resiliency and sustainability. I'd like that number five to match the line in the property reuse committee document since we made a, to be a more, you know.
What would you like it to read?
I'm flipping between the two here. Hold on one second. I think it should say seek to promote resiliency and sustainability, like from the PRC 2023 document.
Seek to promote?
Yes.
Okay, so add seek to in front of the word promote on goal number five?
I think that might be a frivolous motion.
Is there a second?
I thought we were allowed to change capitals and stuff.
Is there a second?
Second, Westerville.
Okay. I got a motion by Borlon and a second by Westerville.
Do I have to do them one by one because I was still working on the goals? I'm just confused. I just want to.
It could be done as one motion.
Oh, yeah, can I continue then first before?
Yeah, sure.
Should I draw my second until she's done?
I think number one on the property use committee should be added into this document as well.
Yeah, put all, put all your amendments in one motion.
Yeah, I'm going there. Number two from the property use committee. Sure, ensure the decision-making process is inclusive. I'm just going to say them all, let me go through and make sure. How many am I left? I mean, Mike, can I just take that whole goal section and move it over?
That's your motion, sure.
I mean, I'm just, you said there has to be minimum. So I'm trying to like understand.
I don't think that changes the intent of, basically, my understanding is the final product, unless you add to the agenda, needs to be recognizable as what the original document was. And this is just an expansion of the goals in there, is my opinion.
Okay.
There's similar goals, you know, they're very.
All right. Am I allowed to? Does my amendment have to be solely my amendment or can other counselors add amendments in?
No, it's got to be yours.
All right. So let me. I mean, basically, I'd like to take the goals as written in the PRC and move them into the goals. I think it's clearly, it's much more clearly written as it's.
I could read those if.
Sure, that'd be great.
Let me do it now or wait till, mayor, should I do it right now?
You want to add them too, or you want to just take these out?
I would like to go one through seven and put those in as.
Replace with one through seven. You want me to read these?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. There are seven goals in the 2023. The goals of this process are to, one, ensure all town council, RTM, agency, board and commission decisions align with the long-term strategic plans, parentheses, including but not limited to the plan of conservation and development, zoning regulations, et cetera, of the town. Two, ensure the decision-making process is inclusive, participatory, comprehensive, consistent, predictable, transparent, accountable, and accessible to the public. Number three, seek to promote resiliency and sustainability. Four, seek to enhance the quality of life for Groton's residents, businesses, and visitors. Five, seek to satisfy the needs for housing, market rate affordable, low and moderate income. Seek to grow the town's grant list and diversify the tax base. And number seven, seek to divest from real property with little to no use to the town.
So you want to add all those?
Yes.
So there'll be 12?
No, I'm.
Replace, I think is the.
Point of information?
Yes.
So some of the goals that were just read, if I'm hearing it correctly, matched what was already here.
Right.
So we're only adding technically two? Is that what I'm?
I think the cleanest way is just to say, get rid of these and then put those.
And they're slightly worded different, where you have the seek in the one version versus not in the other on all those.
Right. She just wants to just replace these goals with the ones from the other.
Can you please reread number six?
Number six. Number six, seek to grow the town's grant list and diversify the tax base.
Maybe it was the one with the low income or low and moderate housing?
Oh, okay. Number five.
Sorry.
Seek to satisfy the needs for housing, semicolon, market rate, comma, affordable, comma, low, comma, and moderate income.
And number one again?
Number one, ensure all town council, RTM, agency, board and commission decisions, decisions align with the long-term strategic plans, including but not limited to the plan of conservation and development, zoning regulations, et cetera, of the town.
That's my amendment for now.
Okay. I've got amendment by Council Board along to place the goals in the 2021 document with the goals from the 2023 document. Is that a second by Council Westerville?
Yes, it is, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Number five, I am not in favor of, so I will not be supporting this because seeking the needs with the housing, nobody says that property will be going just towards housing. That should not be a goal that every property should be part of housing. Groton Heights is an example that when you put out an RFP that you might get numerous different businesses that would be interested. So nobody says housing should be one of the goals. I mean, it shouldn't be the only, like, one of the goals that we do with our town property. So I won't be supporting this. Thank you.
Council Board along?
Yes. I, if I remember correctly, we've had our, you know, our town development staff come in constantly and speak about the need for housing. We heard from Bramford Manor, the need for low-income housing. We hear from the elderly, the need for affordable housing. This does not mean in a goal, it doesn't mean that each property is going to fit into that. It's a way of thinking when looking at something. That was generated from the 2021 housing, 2021?
21-ish, I think.
Where they came and they said they, these are the things we need. We constantly are being told that we need housing for the military. That we're having 5,000 new employees coming to Groton soon and we need housing. It doesn't mean that, you know, we set goals in our own life. We don't always achieve them, you know? You know, every day I wake up thinking I'm going to do more walking and maybe I meet the mark halfway. It's a goal, it's a way of thinking. It doesn't mean it's a set to do. So I think that, if I'm correct, is a way that we put that in there. It wasn't you must, it was the word seek. It's, it's not a strong word like promote or you will do. So I would encourage, you know, Council Franco to, to consider supporting that because no, not every property should be. Some might be for open space, some might be for other needs, some might be other properties. But this is what we heard overwhelmingly from the community and the town development staff as a need for our town was we lacked housing, affordable housing and newer structures in our town. All of these goals, again, they're just a rule brick. It's great if you can achieve them, but everything might not fit that tapestry or the need for that particular, particular goal. It's a guiding principle. It's something when using the documents that were given from the economic development staff to kind of use the vision that they had put forward to us. But if that's the only one you don't support, at this point, I'd be happy to get six through. So I would be, I could amend that to take that out at that this time and maybe under the next council, they'd be willing to add it. Just a thought.
Thank you. Councillor Parker?
I'm sorry, could you read number one one more time?
Number one?
Yes.
Ensure all town council, comma, RTM, comma, agency, comma, board and commission decisions align with the long-term strategic plans, and then parentheses, including but not limited to the plan of conservation and development, comma, zoning regulations, et cetera, end of, end of parentheses, of the town.
Right.
So making sure the council, RTM, agency, board, commission is aligned with long-term plans.
Is it possible, John, that you can, it's not in the packet, is it?
I've got last week's cow.
I have the floor.
What's that?
I have the floor.
I was just trying to help if it was projected.
Councillor Borlon, you don't have the floor.
Please, thank you.
It should be in the packet though.
You do not have the floor, councillor Borlon. Please do not speak when you do not have the floor.
Okay. If, if number five, I believe councillor Franco was concerned about, can we add the word besides housing and/or businesses? Just so that we're on, we're trying to grow the grand list and diversify the tax base, correct? Is that one of our goals? Is.
Number four in 2021?
Number four in 2021, but we don't have it in the 2023. I, I just want to make sure, if it's number six, then yes. Because I don't think we need to, if we're gonna say we're getting the property for housing and everything else, real property, growing the grand list, I think that includes our housing and everything else. Because the RFP has to be very specific when they're doing it. And the housing's already gonna be included as part of the process of our resiliency and sustainability. So I'm just trying to compromise here. And some of the verbiage is already what we have in 21, just you added two more. And I'm okay with either. Just a little verbiage change on number five.
Okay, so you want to amend the amendment?
I would love to amend the amendment.
Okay.
To include the words in number five, not only housing and development, development of businesses.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Thank you.
Councillor Borlon?
I think I still have the floor, right?
You still want it? Yeah.
Yes, I'm just trying to make sure, and I know there was some concerns about the questions that we had within our the disposition of properties. But don't we have to be very specific when everything comes to the, property's been advertised? It goes to each and every group, it's gotta go to the town council, the commissions. The commissions are towards the end because they have to approve every step of the person's property, their goals and what they want to bring to Grotton. So seeing them at the end of the process to make sure that they're in line of every step of the way makes sense. So I understand that we as a council can make that final decision on everything. But without the guidance and the permissions of following the zoning and rules and regulations of the commission groups, instead of having them at the end, I mean, beginning of the process, they need to be at the end of the process, which is why, since 2023 was brought up, why I had concerns about 2023, because that's not fair and biased, because you have the same people looking at the property at the beginning, the RFP at the beginning, and then at the end. So how would businesses feel if they're bringing it forth and the people, the commissions are already at the beginning of the process and not the end of the process? And is that gonna be a different group property? Because there's five or six people, potentially seven, in the commission group to make a decision on, but they're already at the beginning. So I don't see the fair in. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Point of information?
Hold on, I'm just gonna clarify because this is gonna get confusing quickly. So we have the main motion, which is the recommendation from the cow. We have an amendment to replace the goals. Replace the goals in the 2021 document with the goals from the 2023 document. Then we have a second amendment of the amendment, okay? So now that we have a second amendment, we cannot have any more amendments to this amendment. So first we'll vote on the second, after discussion, we will vote on the second amendment. If, if it passes, it will amend the amendment. And at that point, if someone wants to make another second amendment, they can do that at that point. But then when we vote on the amendment, we will be voting on the amendment as amended. And, you know, that's just what we do every day. So just so we know, we are on a second amendment and the only thing to be discussed right now is the second amendment. Councillor Borlon?
I just had a point of information. I was wondering, since it was, the 2023 document was not included in this packet for tonight, if he could maybe put it up on the screen so we could see it? It might make things go a little bit faster so we don't have to keep rereading them. Just so we can see it on our screens here, it would be helpful.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it if, if.
I could send it if he doesn't have it. It's in the packet from last.
I think he's working on it right now, just give him one more.
What?
Here's the 2023.
Can you mean councillor Westerville?
Can you just enlarge it, please? Thank you.
While projecting.
Councillor Westerville, you're hot-miked.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Oh, it's blocking the, that's one.
Why is it doing that?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's not doing it right. Yeah, because one of the dials, like, it's the biggest you can get, too. There you go. Yes, there you go.
Can we close the participants?
And then just enlarge the main screen.
There we go. And you can maybe click it maybe one more time to larger, just one more hair, just so you can see. Right there's perfect, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Franco?
Thank you. So as I read this, number one says, including but not limited to the plan of conservation, development, zoning regulations. And this has come up before in the past where you may get people that.
Just one second.
Put in a bid on.
We're only on the second amendment. So.
Yeah, but it includes these. It's all of this with an amendment, with an amendment to four, I mean, to five.
Right, so we're only discussing five. Then we'll vote on five. The amendment, we're only discussing councillor Parker's specific amendment.
Okay, so number five, seek to satisfy needs of housing, market rate affordable, low and moderate income, and then you added business, is that, as well as business? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, may I answer?
Yeah.
So that also would eliminate if we kept it as town property and made it into a park of some sort. So I personally, I am good with keeping the goals that are there, they're pretty broad in general. I see some issues with some of these in here, not all of them, but this one, when it comes to housing, I do not think housing should be part of this. Because we have sent out RFPs before and sometimes we've left them wide open and accepted whatever a developer wants to do because they can, that's how we have done it. We don't always have to specifically state what we're looking for for a property because we would have never gotten there or behind if we had done that. Not that it worked out, but something of such, something we may not have thought of. So I'm not in favor of specifically stating housing at all or nor businesses, so I would much rather prefer to have the original goals, so thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jaquom?
Thank you, mayor. I'm still looking over the goals now myself. But I don't, I think my concern is that we're now gonna be sitting here with this amendment, piecemealing it and doing that rather than either doing a refer or something where we could at least bring it here and do it together when it's not about to be at 10 o'clock at night and we're not doing our best work. So I'm not in favor of any of this piecemealing for this. Thank you.
Councillor Borlon?
With all due respect, my opinion in regards to number five and this piecemeal, we could have done this on Tuesday night. And now here we are. So there are some good items in here that could be worked forward, that could have been gone through. We should have did this Tuesday night. And it wouldn't feel rushed. We never even had a chance to have a full working session to go line by line. The fact that it wasn't even added in the packet tonight shows there's no interest. And I had asked for it to be projected up.
A point of water, that's not, this has nothing to do with the amended motion.
Correct, we're only talking about, I'm sorry, I'm only talking about councillor Parker's second amendment.
Sure, number five is amended, could have been spoke about on Tuesday night. That's, that's your name.
No, we're talking about whether to pass councillor Parker's amendment or reject it. That's it.
And I have a right to just speak to my feelings on how we could have gotten there sooner as you allowed councillor Jaquom to speak that this is being piecemealed and rushed. Was that your name? I'm just curious, just trying to make sure I'm on the same level, respectfully.
So the only discussion that is allowed is discussion on number five, specifically councillor Parker's amendment to number five.
Right, so number five, we could have discussed on Tuesday. And here we are, so I, I'm shocked that there's some things you don't like about it. It would have been great to know earlier. And so as councillor Jaquom stated, it wouldn't feel piecemealed and rushed. We've all had the opportunity. I like number five the way it is. I think we're reading, in my opinion, reading too deeply into it, these are, these are broad goals. You know, it's when a property becomes available, the town staff can ask for direction from the council, hey, this property here, do you guys want housing? Do you need affordable housing? Do you want development, type of development? It doesn't say you must, it's a broad way of looking at it and allowing it. If the council feels rushed with number five, then, I mean, should we seek to table it to a later date? So that we can actually give its full deliberation on number five and many other items here? So I'm just asking like how that would have to happen, I guess that's my, my question.
Okay, so there are motions to table, the only question is whether.
I didn't, I didn't make a motion, I'm asking.
I understand, I understand. I'm answering. There are, there is a motion to table, I don't know if it will precede a motion, an amended motion, so I'll check.
Wait a minute, do we have to do the other ones first?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is if you can do it at this time or if you have to wait till the, until the amendments are voted on.
Just a minute, if you use the term table, it won't go back to cow, it'll stay on the table for the regular council.
Right. That'd be great.
You want me to?
Wait.
Point of clarification?
Sure.
That's what I was asking Nancy about earlier was, the motion would be a motion to refer it to committee, to put it back in a committee of the whole agenda if the council wanted to, you know, review it in more detail.
Does that need a two-thirds vote?
Majority.
I'm sorry, what, can you explain that again?
Yeah, the motion I think we're discussing would, would be to make a motion to refer it to a committee, to the committee of the whole. Because as John Bird said, the motion to table wouldn't work, but motion to refer it to the committee of the whole would put it back in the committee of the whole for review and discussion on a later date.
Okay, yes, I understand that. My only question is, will that motion precede an amended motion, like?
There's already three on the floor, basically, there's three on the floor.
To amended, original.
One, one original, two amended.
Right, like, do we have to resolve the amendments first and then we can do a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that. Okay, you have 42 seconds.
Yep, so I think that's a great idea, what councillor McBride just read. And I think that allows us to properly give the time needed to look at all the numbers, including five, and make sure that we're giving it the time it needs. So I don't know if I'm gonna be putting that on or councillor McBride will or whoever, but we can't put it on now to get rid of one, is that correct?
We're to vote down?
Okay, so that might be a great direction for us and that way we can have it included in our agenda packet and really work through it and at least give it a chance. Strip it down, let's work together.
Oh, can you reread your amendments to five, councillor Parker?
Oh, just to add the words, seek to satisfy the needs for housing, moderate, market rate, affordable, low, and moderate income, as well, and businesses.
Okay.
Because I don't want to exclude, we're only, it sounds like we're only seeking housing. And this is not, I don't think that was the intent, my personal opinion. I, I thought the goal was to at least diversify the whole of Grotton. But if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong.
Okay, so just, and, and businesses, add that to the end of number five. Did I answer your question, councillor Westerville?
Actually, my question was, if we were to, if someone were to withdraw one of the motions, would that allow the third motion so that this would go to the committee? Or so that we can make a motion to the committee without getting, without having to vote on a whole bunch of stuff? That was my question, so.
Okay. Really, the only motion that can be withdrawn right now is councillor Parker's motion because anyone else withdrawing their motion would withdraw, would have, would necessarily withdraw the other two. So councillor Parker's motion is the only motion that can be withdrawn at this time.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that would be in the best interest so that we could move this to committee. However, I'll let you guys talk about it.
Okay, but either way, whether it's withdrawn or not, we only have to vote on one thing before another motion can be added to the floor.
Understood, thank you.
Okay. I'll just say really briefly, I want to thank councillor Parker for bringing this motion to amend and being the first person to propose a compromise. So thank you for opening up that discussion of compromise. I commend you for it, thank you for that. you for that.
I'm not withdrawing.
Okay, very good. So we will vote on Council Parker's second amended motion to number five, adding at the end of the line, and businesses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was...
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining?
Abstaining.
So it fails.
All right, so, that fails four in favor, Westerville, McBride, Melendez, Parker, four opposed, Casiri, Franco, Jones, Jacob, one abstaining, Portelon. We are on to the amended motion to replace the goals. Council McBride?
Just a point of clarification, is this where I make a motion, or do I need to speak about? I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the Committee of the Whole in a meeting in August, as well as to direct the administration to continue to market efforts of these properties, so there's no delays, with that being said.
Second.
Second, Westerville.
Wait, what was the second part of your?
The second part of the motion was to direct the administration to, to continue to market the property, so we don't have a delay in, in moving things forward.
Three.
Okay. All right.
Can I speak to the motion?
Let me see if it's a debatable motion?
It is.
Do you, is there a second?
I, I seconded it.
Second, Westerville.
My Counselor McBride, second by Council Portelon. Sure, yes.
The reason I'm proposing this motion is because I cannot support the 2021 version for many reasons. First and foremost is that the residents clearly stated they wanted to revise the document, so that it had more teeth and transparency and involved the town, and this 2021 version in its current form, without additional review, does not, does not include such. More specifically, there's been no review of the 2021 document by any residents, there's been no public timing, timeframes, public meetings to discuss the 2021 meeting since it was last proposed. The EDC has not reviewed it, the Planning and Zoning has not reviewed it, the Conservation Commission has not reviewed it, the Inlands Wetlands hasn't reviewed it, the Housing Authority hasn't reviewed it, and there's been no discussion or review, modifications, or improvements by this document at this council level. So I cannot support it at this current time, and I think it's in our best decisions to move forward, incorporate some of the items that were in the 2023 document into the 2021, if that's what this council desires. There were six or seven key areas in the 2023 document that we could go through and hopefully embed in the document, but at this point, it's not really part of this council to discuss this, but I do think the motion to refer back to the Cal is in the best interest of, of the council, best interest of Groton, so I highly support that, thank you.
Thank you. Council Portelon?
Um, I couldn't agree more, I think that is a fair compromise for this council, and if at the end, we end up with a 2021 document, some may not be happy, but at least let's give it the light of day, and let's give it some air in, in good faith. I, I love the tail end of, of Counselor McBride's motion, I think he did that brilliantly, because again, as it was stated by Counselor Westerville, I looked back to and could not find where the direction to say that council, the, the economic development couldn't continue to develop property, so I think that is great, continue to show the properties, by the time it takes to get to the end will be quite some time. So I think if this comes on to the next meeting, as it was stated in August, this allows our economic development to continue to work in good faith, it allows us to then take the time we need, instead of going motion for motion, it was not included in the packet, we're looking at it on a projected screen, we can add both the 2021 and the 2023, like it was last Tuesday, and do the work of the people that came out, because we should be listening to those constituents, and I think that is a awesome motion and a fair proposal, and I hope that I can get the support of these counselors, and counselors that are up here that were not part of this council from 2021, I hope that you bring some amendments forward of your own ideas, and I'd love to hear them, so that you can be part of this document and this history. Thank you.
Okay, my only question about this motion is, let's just say it takes the council two months to come to a decision on this, in that two months, which plan is the planning department using to, to market the property? Like, if we, I mean, the only, the only answer to that question can be the one pager that we currently have right now, so, I guess, supporting this would be sort of tacit approval that if a property sells in the interim of now, until we make a decision, we're on the one page, one pager, so, that's, that's the only question I really have about this, I mean, that was sort of the genesis of, of the council proposing a stoppage. I remember it happening, so, that's really my only question about that, so, anyway. Council Westerville?
I do understand your trepidation on that, however, I think that by the time we would be able to market and sell a property, we should be way beyond the next couple of months, and we should have this finalized by then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the one pager, which is what would be, we would be working on, because if we don't make a decision tonight, has no way of, the Planning and Zoning to do the prop, background checks that we requested, and you cannot authorize that unless it's written somewhere, they can't just do a standard background check without it being written somewhere. I'm going to say it twice. I have concerns about 2023, which is what I brought up the last time we talked about it, I still have concerns about it. Again, as I've stated this evening, you cannot have the checks and balances of the person, the commission group that would be at the beginning and be at the end, who's approving the process, because I don't think eventually will be us, but if they're at the beginning of a process, who's checking the balance at the end? If they have to bring their paperwork, the same group's going to be approving their paperwork, that selected them in the first place. I have big concerns about that, that's not a checks and balance. So they can't be at the beginning, they have to be at the end to be the approving group, to forward it to us, to the council. My other concern was, there was too many people. You take out all the commission groups that are in the beginning, one of them, if I remember correctly, is the Groton Housing Authority was part of it, a TOPE group, they were one of the ones that asked us about property, how do you take them out of the process? Because you, they'll have to be taken out the process. So, either we review everything and do it all in one, and try to incorporate some, or just go to the three pager for now, and incorporate things later on down the road, because I had problems with this, and I'm stating it now, the checks and balances are wrong in this, I'm not, I'm not approving the 2023, because I don't agree with how the process was set up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor, can you, would you just mind repeating Counselor McBride's? Is it the one pager that we're going to, you would move forward with?
In the interim.
Interim, okay. Yeah, so I would adamantly oppose that, my, the way I'm going to explain it is, you know, there was a consensus at one point, whether that council was there, but there was a consensus, as you could tell, this council does not have a consensus, and as Counselor Parker stated, there were some things which checked and balances there that I also agree with. And then the other concern I had was the time it would take to work on the actual document, are we going to sit here and go line by line? And if it took a committee over a year timeframe, it's going to drive us way past this council's term, at that point, leaving it's the next council to decide, once again, kicking it down the road. So I'm just not in favor of the amendment, I would like to move forward with the 2021, if we wanted to bring it, multiple calendars, move forward that way, in my opinion, thank you.
Council Portelon?
So, I have a question for the Town Manager, my understanding is after we found out during the MOSA that there was no background checks have been done, I remember very vividly under a meeting that you stated that, that they had started that, so, since the MOSA thing, we haven't started, I thought we did, so that's where I'm confused.
Well, I'm trying to think, we've had, we said then, we would do a background check.
Yes, we have, and okay, I just want to make sure, because that was, that was an immediate change that you guys said you were doing, despite, and I, and I really respected that, I remember that meeting at the Senior Center, so, the concern of not doing the background checks, I sure hope we've been doing them the last couple of years after we discovered what we did. That's why I was asking, you know, for the one page thing to be projected. Is there properties, I guess, the Town Manager, that you think are going to close in two months? I mean, that's my first question, I guess I'll wait for that.
Well, yes, for our feet first, well, technically Colonel Ledger, we're going to do the, that has nothing to do really to it, but yes, we're going to close on one, but that's separate from this. You know, and when you start showing properties, they, they want to know what the process is going to be, so I wouldn't want to get too heavily, I'd want to know you're going to have something in a month or two finalized? Because once you start showing it, that we really wouldn't show it until we know it's, where it's going to be headed, because they will want to know at that time.
Well, this is put on the next Cal, I think all counselors, you know, part of the elected process is that we don't do the work when we're just here, we do it outside of council. This document has been up and submitted since many weeks ago, and has changed only a little bit, so I'm sure everyone's pretty familiar with it, so come with your edits. It wouldn't have to go five, we can, we can do it all on that night. Don't overload the agenda, put it on, and let's go, we don't have to go line by line, we can go section by section, or whatever you propose you have a problem with. Strip out and take out whatever you feel, strip it down to 2021, let's add in the good stuff that we feel that we all can agree on. So we, we would encourage counselors to do a little bit of homework, and, and come forward at that Cal meeting, ready to make action, line, online items. I don't see that it would be dragged out, if it's good for the town, and after all the people spoke, what is one more meeting? It's, it's worth, it's worth the wait, when we're talking about a process, and it was stated that they are doing background checks, and I'm, I'm glad to hear that, because I remember that very vividly, that that was going to continue, and, and they said, we will do that, and it was stated, because other developers have come since then, and background checks were done. So, I think this is a fair idea, fair compromise, I think this is time, I guess it's time to review it a little bit further, and find some good points in here, or maybe there's some things that you have that is not in here, that you can bring forward on that day to make an amendment to, and it's not going to slow much up and down. If there is one property that's going to be an outlier, if the background check's being done, and if we've been using the one pager for this long, I mean, maybe if there's some major changes, we can have an executive session when the developers at the final stages, like we normally do, but I don't think it should stop us, we, one more meeting is not that far away, we're almost there.
And I, I believe what would be taken up going back would be the 21, and you'd be working on that document, it wouldn't be taking the 23, you're referring this 21 back, so you're going to start from there and tweak that.
That's true.
But it's still working on it, and, and working together, which we haven't done.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the question.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to move the question by Counsel Jones, a second by Franco. Per our rules, it is a simple majority, not debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. Eight in favor, one opposed, Portelon zero abstaining. So we will first vote on Counsel McBride's motion to refer back to the Committee of the Whole.
Is, point of information?
Well, the, the questions mean we have to vote now.
But I, I want to make sure I'm voting on the right question?
No, 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 I, we are voting on the, the motion, Counsel McBride's motion to refer back to the Committee of the Whole.
But there was a tail end on that in my hearings.
Oh.
Right, and to...
That's all I'm asking for.
Okay.
To begin marketing.
Okay. Counsel McBride's motion.
Can you read that into the record, just so I understand?
Counsel McBride, you want to state your motion?
Certainly. Excuse me, the motion is to refer the 2021 Property Rights Committee back to the Committee of the Whole, and also to direct the administration to continue to market the property, so there's no delays.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Point of information? The 2021 back to the Committee of the Whole, or the 20?
It, that's the only one we can refer back, because the one...
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to be sure, thank you very much.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? All right. So that fails. Right. Right, I'll call, I'll call.
Okay.
Okay. Fails four in favor, Portelon, McBride, Melendez, Westerville, five opposed, and zero abstaining. Okay, so we are on to Counsel Portelon's amendment to replace the goals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, so that fails four in favor, Portelon, McBride, Melendez, Westerville, four opposed, Jones, Jacob, Franco, Casiri, and one abstaining, Parker. Fails. Back to the main motion, Counselor Casiri, main motion, the motion has not been amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that, okay, I'm going to call it out. Passes five in favor, Jacob, Jones, Franco, Parker, Casiri, four opposed, Portelon, McBride, Melendez, Westerville, zero abstaining. Passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Sorry, a second.
Just, just to make it clear, Tuesday's meeting will pretty much just be another council meeting, and we'll continue all these, these grants have to get done next week.
Okay, we have, we have grant. We have approving grants, this is a non-debatable motion, Counsel Portelon, you have made a motion to adjourn, was there a second?
I seconded.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Abstentions, so that fails three in favor, Portelon, McBride, Jones. Five, six opposed, zero abstaining. So we are on to American Rescue Plan Act Bike Rotten.
For expediency, you could just read the result.
Okay, page 26, I make a motion, resolved that the Town Council awards an additional $15,000 to Bike Rotten for the bike pump track project, and refer the matter to the RTM, so moved.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Casiri. Any discussion? Council Portelon?
So if this doesn't pass to the Town Manager, is there any other monies that the town has to support this endeavor, because the outreach that I heard from, basically, this is a town asset, and volunteers are fundraising for it, and, but we're going to be overseeing it and repairing it and maintaining it, is that correct?
Correct.
So if it's an asset, then we should be coughing it up in the matter, I feel, I mean, if it's going to become our responsibility. So if, if the RTM was to vote this down, is there any plan or direction that will come back to the council, or is the town, or has the town have a plan, or what's the plan?
There's, there's a couple of options, I mean, there's more so, but if, in terms of the town funding it, if it came back, you could do it out of contingency, you could do it out of, at this level, you could do it easily out of the capital improvement fund, so, there's options if it did fail that, it still would have to go back to them for that source, however, so.
Just to note, Counsel Westerville had to leave us at 10:14.
All right, well, that's great to hear, because I do think it is going to be something that we're going to be maintaining, and I think they've raised a pretty hefty amount already, and I think we should be willing to try to figure out a way to, you know, be a part of the process, so, thank you. process, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to?
Before you do that next one, I might read the last whereas, because that resolved, and this next one's vague. I would read that final whereas, where it says the actual amount of the grant.
I can read it.
Just to make it clear to the public.
Pfizer STEM grant?
Resolution authorizing the Town Manager to accept a Pfizer STEM grant on behalf of Town of Groton, whereas Groton Parks and Recreation was eligible to apply for and was selected to receive a Connecticut Laboratories Communities Grant for $4,855. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Manager may accept the funds and execute all such reports and certifications as may here and after be required as a condition of receiving this grant, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Council Portelon?
This STEM grant, is it something that's going to continue every year, or is it a one-time?
One-time, they'd have to apply again for another grant.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to Climate Action Plan Grant.
Could read that if you want, Mayor.
Sure.
Just the resolve part, Mr. Manager?
Yeah.
So, resolution endorsing the acceptance of the Climate Resilience Fund Grant to develop a climate action plan. Resolved that the Town Council endorses the acceptance of?
One above it.
Oh, the where, apologies. Whereas on June 14, 2023, the state announced the project to be awarded funding, which included $200,000 for the Town of Groin OPDS cap proposal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council endorses the acceptance of the CRF award, authorizing the Town Manager to sign all required grant documents for such program and refer the matter to the RTM, so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Jacome, seconded by Franco. Council Portelon?
Yeah, I just think I want to thank the, you know, the Sustainability Sustainability Committee for, you know, putting forth the efforts of bringing in a paid staff member, because without that, you know, we'd be seeking these types of grants. I asked for decorum down on the other end.
Council Portelon, Council Portelon, you had the floor.
Thank you. I don't know, do you want to speak, Julia?
I was just going to say, point of information. I believe it was the council that voted for that, correct? Sustainability Manager Director?
It came.
Yes. That's correct.
Thank you.
The council approved that.
Right, and I was stating that it came from the committee, the direction, with their ideas to look to seek to hire. Is that true, Town Manager Burt?
Yeah, it was a recommendation from, I think it was a standing recommendation from an earlier version of them before I even arrived.
Right. And that's how we got to where we were, so I think those actions are very important, and I think they, they, they give a valuable asset to the community to look at the town in a way that is looking at the changes in our climate, so I think it's very important. I'm excited for the new position, and I'm excited to see these new grants.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to Memorandum of Agreement, 2022 State Homeland Security Grant. Council Parker?
You want me to read the resolved and the further resolved?
The title?
Okay.
Yeah, I think the two resolved are fine on this one.
Okay, two resolved.
The two resolved.
With the title, yeah.
Okay. I make a motion for the resolution approving of the Memorandum of Agreement between the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and the Town of Groton. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Groton may enter into, with, and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate, and further be, further resolved that, that John Burt as Town Manager of the Town of Groton is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Groton, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents, I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto the opioid crisis education program, Council Cassiri.
Thank you. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to develop a social media and online campaign educating the public on community resources. Whereas Council Melinda Cassiri initiated a referral to educate the public on the substance abuse and recovery services provided in the community and throughout the state. And whereas at the Committee of the Whole meeting on June 27, 2023, it was recommended that a webpage be created listing the resources that residents can utilize to support them during challenging times. And whereas GMTV and social media be used as tools guiding the residents to the community services webpage, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves the Town Manager to develop a social media and online campaign to educate the public on 211 substance and recovery programs, provide health department updates on the opioid epidemic, and other resources for the community, I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Cassiri, seconded by Franco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to end my councilship with thanking the council for supporting and approving this resolution, and I really do hope that it saves a life, so thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion to adjourn?
Carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Council Jacome. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jones, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, we are adjourned unanimously at 10:22.